You are good to go.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We'll call this meeting the orders, Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, February 17, 2021. This meeting is virtual only. And this was a but general budget review workshop for the 2122 budget season or year. In relation to the meeting and the documents you're going to be seeing, all documents are available online at today's meeting. They're available on the town calendar with the agenda. You click on it there or Board of Finance page under budgets. So you're actually probably seeing these much more easily than if you're in attending a meeting in person. So we'll start the meeting off with the culture and recreation budgets and that's the East Haddon Public Library System. So.
Can I just jump in for a moment? For the members who were emailed the budgets and for the selectmen, you have two sections. So you'll have the operating budget and then the capital budget. They're in two separate sections and cleared out. So just you'll be bouncing between two different sections. Kind of like if you go with the budget book, just so to realize that.
Yes, thank you, Cindy. So why don't we start with you, Michael, on a general overview? So.
Thank you so much for having me here today. I really appreciate this opportunity. Hopefully, the library budget is not very controversial this year. It's hopefully very straightforward. There are, I guess I'll just start with the things that I'm asking for increases or things that are changing and then explain kind of why as opposed to the ones that are heads held steady because that should be pretty obvious. So the one of the big ones is building maintenance. This fiscal year, we had budgeted 10,000. I'm recommending we increase that to around 15,000 and that's simply because both of our buildings are around 100 years old. And that's kind of our our budget for when things break. That's where it comes out of. So over the past five years, our average in that line has been around 14,000, even though we've been budgeted lower. And in 2018, it hit a high of 18,000. So 15,000 would bring it more in line with reality and we may even still go over if it's a particularly bad year. I know this year, we we had some elevator troubles or elevator bills pretty early on, which tapped us out. And I don't know what challenges we'll be facing next year. So I do recommend just increasing it based on the the age of the buildings. I think the other eye popper is going to be the electricity bill, which is a giant increase, or it looks like one, but hear me out. The East Haddon Free Public Library lost its heating system earlier this year. The boiler broke and it was replaced with the split level heating and air conditioning units. So the the heat is now being provided completely through electricity. So you're going to see that reflected in the electricity budget. But it should just about balance out with the heating budget since we no longer have to pay for oil for that building. So there should be just about a wash between electricity and heat. Right now, I think I have it budgeted for maybe a little bit extra in electricity because I've only received two bills so far from EverSource. So I don't know exactly what it's going to look like. So I'm I'm overestimating. Hopefully, we'll come under budget. So.
Okay.
Um, I think those are the big things. The other thing would be the the telephone bill. Right now Rathbun is paying bills to Frontier for its burglar alarm, fire alarm, and its fax machines. Those two lines are through Frontier and the other lines are through Comcast. We might want to look into streamlining everything just to go through Frontier. Comcast was supposed to be a savings and it turned out that we had to continue paying bills for fax and alarm, which we didn't anticipate. So if we went back to Frontier, might involve some rewiring. That's not my forte, but I think we might be able to save some funds there. But as it stands, there's a slight increase there because of the two bills. Other than that, I think that's about it. The only plug thing I would like to point out is that the $15 minimum wage affects the library quite heavily because a lot of our employees are minimum wage. So anytime that increases, our salaries increase. And we are hitting a point where there are some employees that have been here for a decade or more and they're now making as much money as the new hires, like the high school interns, simply because of the 15-hour minimum wage or the steps we're taking to get there. So I think we should look at maybe staying competitive, keeping our budgets and salaries in line with what other towns are paying their library employees. But I leave that to to you guys to look into. But I do want to put that plug in there. Any questions about the library budget?
So it's understandable that we should be looking at a differential for people with many years of service. That's totally understandable. And I have a question for Mr. Angersola. Do you have any information or can you talk at all about the telephone service? Especially regarding the alarms, et cetera?
Actually, I've been myself a marketer and spending some time with Sinatrol and Venture and looking into getting the whole monitoring rate for the whole town on all their buildings, on all the buildings. And the rates are coming in very cheap and very term friendly. They're like offering up to five years for what or less than we're paying now. So we may be able to jump to two libraries, put the two libraries right on that, too. And they're also offer a cell service. So we could put a box in the building. It would be cell. So we may not have to worry about Frontier or Comcast for that at all. And so it was very, the terms are very friendly and the and the monthly rates are very good, too. The library wasn't included, but we will put them on the list to go down and take a look at. They weren't included on the original package that we had because we didn't have any rates from you before. So but they will be coming in next week to do a walk of all the town buildings again.
Excellent.
We'll include those, too.
Okay, so yeah, the electricity increase is understandable and our early estimates, Michael, was that it would be a wash. Especially because it's an increase, but that we did have the the new units are much more efficient and they as compared to the ones that were doing the cooling.
Right.
So we're looking at there might be some savings. Did you agree on that, Don?
I do. Yeah, I think it's, I think we'll know in a few more months what it's going to look like, but I think it'll be pretty much a wash between the two.
But I think it was wise, Michael, to show an increase just in case rather than have us be caught underfunded. So with that, I'll turn it over to our select women. Carleen, would you like to comment?
Yeah, a couple of questions. We'll start at the top there with the salary. So this increase, Michael, of the 70, almost 7200, is that the average increase of like the 2.75, I think, is what they go for union? Are you following that same increase or have you done something different on that?
I'm going to defer to Cindy on this one.
It's in at the 2.75% right now.
Okay, okay.
So if the board, the boards would choose to make adjustments, that number would adjust as well.
Okay, so right now, this increase is just reflective on the union increase of 2.75. Okay, so the next question is on the building maintenance that you've got. Are, is this reflected in the capital improvements or is this outside of capital improvements?
This is outside of capital improvements. These are the things that we can't really plan for. So like, for example, when the elevator breaks, we have to call the elevator repairman and the elevator repairman needs money that's outside of the capital budget. So.
Okay, so you're just sort of doing a guesstimation on that increase.
Based off of what we paid in the past, I guess. An educated guesstimation.
Okay, so the next question is on electricity. And you have an increase here and I and I get, I understand why on that. Those are nice looking units. I did go in and I and I did check them out. But my question is probably more to Rob on this is that can we look into? Because I know on the Shagbark arrays that they have, we can add buildings on every year. And, you know, what's the possibility of getting this building and the other libraries as well as the municipal office building, too, on the Shagbark arrays?
So we've already had discussions on that. We're trying, Linda has been working on that, trying to figure out the process. And Linda, maybe you can jump in here because I know you're having problems finding the procedure, if I'm correct.
No, it wasn't a problem with the procedure. I mean, our attorney's already sent a letter to Shagbark asking, um, asking about this. So we're actually, you know, and waiting to hear back. So I will, so basically it's bumping, um, bumping Rich Roberts again and saying, you know, we need to press a little bit more.
Okay.
Shagbark.
Yeah, so we were already working on it.
Okay.
There's only a maximum amount of buildings that can be on it. And if you ever read the Shagbark agreement, no, total. So if you ever read the Shagbark agreement, it is quite legally. Um, it is hard to determine. I thought it was 10 buildings, but then I reread the section. It says five buildings. We've already got three on it. So does that mean we can only add two? So what we did is we were reaching out to Shagbark and then their people to try to get a a better sense of how many buildings can we add?
Okay, so I talked to Julia several months back. I I talked to Cindy about my conversation with Julia. Julia said she's been waiting for somebody to contact her and she seemed to think that the process was laid out fairly easy, in her words. There it was laid out completely on how to do it. But every time you talk to somebody else, it is very confusing. It seems as though there's a lot of gray areas when it comes to this power grid. And we probably have to sit down and figure this all out here.
Our attorney involved with laying it all out because there is, once we get to that point, you know, he made the first reach out. And once we we get to that point, he has like kind of an expert in his office that deals with a lot of this virtual net metering and Z-Rex and all that kind of stuff that understands it a little bit better than we do.
Right, so Julia did say that there was, I believe it's two buildings per year, but she never told me that there was a max on buildings. So we'll have to get that clarified.
Correct.
Yeah, so that was the issues that I was concerned about. Because if there is a max, obviously, we may have buildings that have a much higher electricity consumption. Though we do have a credit of, I believe it's like $35,000 right now. But depending on how the which buildings were added, that could go away very rapidly. And long range, we might be, you know, hurting ourselves. So we have to evaluate this before and get all the details before we sign any particular building up.
We reached out to try to get the ball rolling on this.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. No other questions.
Okay, thank you. Teresa, do you have anything?
Um, yes, Mike, can you speak to how you have been able to fill that gap in building maintenance for the years that it's been over 10,000?
Unfortunately, we've gone over budget, but thankfully, we we were under budget in other line items and it washed out, you know, when you look at the bottom line budget. But if you look at the the line item budget for year over year, often we are over budget in building maintenance. It's just maybe we'll come under heat or electricity, maybe once or twice, some materials, but that that's, you know, washes out bottom line.
We're in a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Yeah, so there's some additional costs that are going to be involved with, and this may be where it comes from. Maybe it's on the capital. I haven't had a chance to review the capital budget yet. But and, you know, as far as removal of furnace and some other odds and ends and at the Free Public Library, so. And there's some minor repairs that are going to would be non-capital also unless they're all grouped. Mr. Angersola, do you have any comments on any of that?
The only additional thing that we're hoping to do down to the Rathbun this year was to seal the brick. The brick probably hasn't been sealed in a lot of years or ever. That was going to be a project. The Free Public Library is getting done in the spring through a little item that was in the budget for this year. And but the Rathbun is on for next year, next budget. And we also want to get the sidewalk fixed, the bluestone sidewalk that's coming from the building out to the concrete sidewalks. Yeah, we're looking to put a new sign up there, too, and redo some shrubs there. So there is a little, there is a few things to get done at the Rathbun. The Free Public Library is, we've got a good handle on this one going forward. The paint and the ceiling will be done this spring through this budget. But the Rathbun did have additional funding for that, for that work.
And we are also continuing investigation of heating and cooling changes at the Rathbun. We're waiting some estimates to come back in on that. It's been somewhat delayed for a number of reasons and possibly COVID being one of them. So that's going to be a little bit more complicated system than we were able to do with the East Haddon Free Public Library because that lent itself very well. It might be a hybrid or combination system mounted the Rathbun. But again, we are looking at it for and with the goal of significant savings. Because at the very least, the modern furnaces, if we do use a furnace in any one of them, or at Rathbun, rather, are much more efficient than the older furnaces. So and we would have to look at whether we want to stay with steam or convert to just hot water. So there's a number of things we're investigating there. So, Michael, did you want any of your folks there on your board to talk to any of any of these items?
No, unless any of them have something to say, I think I think it's all pretty well covered. I don't know if Don Barlow, our board chair, has anything to to add, but.
Don, did you want to say anything?
Probably caught her off guard. Sorry about that, Don.
Well, she's, she could be talking, doesn't realize she's muted, so.
Okay, I'm back. And now I just wanted to say that I think it's great that you're friendly looking at the heating system in the Rathbun that the trying to address the heating system there dates back to, you know, before it was a library system. And when I had was on the Rathbun Board, I guess it's looking like a decade ago. So I think I think it would be great to address that issue. And even, you know, going forward, provided we, you know, if we should have a new library facility, it would, you know, it's a, it would be a building that would have value as an asset and be much more desirable with a a new heating system. So I say, go for it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The thought was that should we change and decide, you know, a new library is built, any infrastructure improvements that we do, especially for heating and cooling would be well received by anyone that's looking at the building. So have a modern heating system in there. So for a conversion to a more, to a different type of function. Did you have any other additional comments, Michael, on your supplies and fixtures? There's no changes there, but the biggest thing being is, you know, books and periodicals. Any changes here? I know there's nothing significant, but.
No, no changes. Just, you know, obviously, we're one of many town departments. So we want to make sure that if we're asking for something, it's something we we need, not necessarily something we want. While I could certainly do a lot with more money for periodicals and books. You know, it's it's a tough budget year, so I don't want to, I don't want to add for more. We might ask for more in the shared services budget for digital materials, but for physical materials, we should be all set. Go ahead, Don.
Oh, I would just like to remind you that we have also, Michael has also applied for a grant from the National Library Service that that might be able to give us more virtual materials, more virtual offerings, so that wouldn't would not affect our operating budget. Except for, you know, funds that might come in to, so that would kind of offset not being able to expand our our books and periodicals.
Very good. Okay, so before we leave the libraries, shall we talk a little bit about capital projects?
Rob, if you would indulge me
Yep.
just to bring to everyone's attention, and I can see the revenue chart didn't post up print out, but the library's projecting their revenue to go up 8.2% or almost $6,200. So they're they're looking at increased revenues, which is helpful to offset their budget increase.
Thank you, Cindy, for bringing that up. I had noticed it and I was going to bring it up and forgot it. Thank you. So that's all positive stuff. And you have a number of items here on your capital. You want to talk about them, Michael, or or you want to have Mr. Angersola talk about them?
I think we could tag team this one.
Okay, all right.
All right, just get to the right page here.
You're looking at the printout from online. It's page 25, starts the capital.
Yeah. Got it. Okay, so the first thing, the first page would be the the new library facility, which would not be for next year. But my understanding is we're going to have a a building exploratory committee or something of that sort, Rob?
That'd be correct. Okay, I've put off, unfortunately, some of this stuff has been put out a little bit because of the issues with COVID, but we're still planning on moving forward and as things relax a little bit, I think we can get something going this spring.
Yeah, so that's very much just a placeholder until that committee completes its work. The Rathbun HVAC system, I think we already mentioned that. I don't know if you or Don have anything else to add on that one?
Don, can you comment on it?
Sorry, I was on mute. So as Rob mentioned before, this building was actually a little bit more difficult than the free library was for able to get heat and air conditioning in there. So we kind of had an idea in our minds what was going to happen and we went down there and it didn't work with the with the vaulted ceilings and everything in the main library part. So we're looking at doing kind of two systems with a boiler in the basement and air handlers on the back of the building and then air handlers put up in the attic. So it's going to be a little bit costly compared to what we did on the last library, but I think it'll be a good system when it comes into place. We haven't officially got a design in place. We do have someone working on it, but we don't have the official design or cost. But I don't think Michael is far off with this price. Once you combine everything together, it'll be time consuming and labor intensive, especially once you get up above the dome in the library to put the air handlers in. But I think it'll be a good system when it's in place. So again, it would be, the boiler probably would be replaced with a smaller one just for heat down in the basement. And then the air handlers would be used for the first floor. The first, the library portion, the back portion and the offices upstairs would be the air handlers. Which are maybe a couple of mini splits in the back, too, to help offset a smaller unit. But it is a big project and it is, it probably won't be far from this price that Michael put in.
So noticing this price is 147,800 for people who may not have the documents in front of them. Does that include the money that was already set aside for the work there? Or is that in addition?
The money set aside for Rathbun was for the boiler.
Right.
Not the HVAC upgrade. So would this replace that? Could we use funding towards that?
So a boiler will be replaced. Boiler will go in the basement.
Because we have $66,057 for a boiler.
So we'd be looking for approximately around numbers 80,000 additional? Is that what we're, well?
No, I think they're separate. Don, can you confirm?
No, I think that with that boiler, no, I would be comfortable with doing 147,800, I'm sorry, additional 81,500, sorry.
Okay, so I will update this sheet to show that there's additional funding prior years of 66057. So that will reduce the amount required by taxation. So I will update this based on this conversation. Okay, cool.
All right, so the next thing we're going to be looking at is the Rathbun window replacement and insulation upgrade. So, Michael, or whomever?
So again, this building that I'm in, the Rathbun, is is quite old. So the windows are going to need to eventually be replaced, which will be expensive because the windows are historic in nature and we're in a historic district. To my knowledge, I know there's only, I think there's only one window that's probably in in serious native replacement. And plus the two that the air conditioners are currently in, we have these large, like mini fridge sized air conditioners stuck in these old windows that just aren't built for it. So I know when we take those air conditioners out, we're going to have some some issues there. But Don, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
So we, again, it's it's been a little difficult to get them there, but we have reached out to a company that can makes these windows right over in Chester, and we're hoping to get a price from him to replace them one at a time if need be. And it's been a little bit, again, he hasn't, they haven't got here too fast. It's been a little bit hard to get prices. I would venture to guess that 175 is is quite a bit, but I'm not 100% sure. I'm assuming these windows are going to be anywhere between 3 and 5,000 each probably for the size of them and the the work that's going to go into them. They're going to be that that price range. When I get a price, matter of fact, it was, we call Patacock Millwork. They're the ones that make make these. And we were hoping that he would give us a price per window so then we would know what, but we just haven't gotten it yet. They're also coming for, actually for the Old Town Hall, too, to look at those also.
Just to, for everyone to note as well, and we're behind with this this year, got delayed a bit last year, but the Long Range Capital Improvement Committee last year ranked this as a number, it was tied as a number three project in town for its its merit. So that is included in this sheet. Capital will hopefully and eventually get to long range capital to look at, but just if there was a ranking assessed last year, we've noted what that is.
There is a need, a dire need for some window replacement there. That's it's obvious. There's some, they're severely rotted and should be taken out and replaced. It's it's definitely beneficial to replace those to keep the heat, the heating stuff in the building.
So and I and I apologize to the two select women. Do you want to talk about or comment on these separately or together at the end after review all of them? You have a preference? No preference? Okay, all right, then we'll do them all at the end if you, if that's fine. The next thing up is you talk about insulation, Michael, this is also with the, where was the insulation going to be here? Because it's listed as window replacement, insulation upgrade. Was that just strictly regarding the windows?
My understanding is it's regarding the windows.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure there was an additional item there was missing. Then we have Rathbun parking lot repair expansion, and this also was tied at 16 with the valuation last year with the capital improvement. Someone like to talk about that? Michael?
Yeah, sure. So Rathbun and EHFPL both have their parking lot repairs and expansions listed here. Obviously, the parking lots are are usable right now, but they are getting a little. Obviously, the parking lots are are usable right now, but they are getting a little worn. They're certainly going to need to be redone eventually. However, it might, I think it would make the most sense to do the library parking lots when other parking lot. If that's next year, that's fantastic. But if it needs to be pushed back, so it ties in with, say, like the senior center or the municipal building or wherever, I think that would make more sense.
So again, for anyone in the public that's watching this or listening, estimated cost for the East Adam Free Public Library is approximately thirty three thousand. And for the Rathburn parking lot repairs and expansion is approximately thirty five thousand. Don, do you have any comments on that?
And so just real quick, I just jumped back to the other one with the windows and insulation. I would almost say the insulation was in addition because we can install the insulation on the attic floors when the heat is done. So once they get done, we can lay out which would be which would be savings for the library going down. The parking lots, yeah, I they are probably in need of replacement, but I don't think they're in dire need this year. We can probably put that off a few more years. It's I would rather see the money invested in HVAC windows and building upkeep, painting, ceiling, and stuff like that. I think the parking lots, I I'm not sure we actually talked about a little bit is if if the new library is that close out. I mean, is this something we could use for a filler for Public Works to do on the parking lots when they're looking for something else to do, we may be able to save quite a bit of money that way too. Then hiring somebody else to come out and do it.
Thank you. And then the last thing on the list for, I believe it's the last thing, is is the Rathburn interior exterior painting. Michael?
And I think we touched on that a little bit earlier. But obviously, the EH FPL building is already has funds ready to go. So that'll be done in the spring and the Rathburn interior exterior. Don, you were talking about the bricks needed ceiling. So I assume that's that's what this project is and.
Yeah, because you may you may notice answer, but was the trim painted a few years ago? Within five years?
The the what?
The outside trim, the white?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah.
So yeah, there was the brick was part of this, a sign was part of this. I wasn't sure.
Right.
Yep. And so actually, I think we actually included a little bit of slate work in this too that were falling off the side. So it was all going to be included with one one number.
Okay. Thank you.
You do have one more capital for the library. You touched on it a little.
I may have skipped over. Which one is that?
H thirty five, the east, the East Adam Free Parking Lot as well. So you touched sort of on it, but it's right here.
Oh, yeah, I think I talked about them together. That's why. Okay. So anything, Don? Any comments? You're muted. Still muted and frozen. Okay. We are we muting her?
No, there we go.
Okay.
So I, you know, I think it's obvious that any painting, interior painting in the Rathburn would be done along, you know, after any heating system renovations were addressed. And just a note that the parking lot at the Rathburn, I think that's in that's in pretty bad shape. But if that were improved and expanded, it really does act as overflow parking for any municipal events that happen in downtown East Tatum, whether it's concerts or you know, some sort of holiday, you know, twelve doors of Christmas sort of thing. So those funds would benefit the library, but they would benefit the town as a whole as well. And just one thing that's always bothered me is orientating the book drop so that people don't have to get out of their cars to to return their books to the library. So and so I think that's that's always on my mind.
Good points. Thank you for bringing that up, Don. And I think almost all of us are probably parked there for functions down at the somewhere in the village. And we just don't think too much about that. It'd be more practical if it was designed slightly differently. And I've always wondered why the the book deposit was where it is. So.
Mystery.
Okay, would the two select women like to jump in here? Teresa, we'll start with you this time.
I actually don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
All right, Carleen?
So the only question is something that Don said because at first you were saying that the Rathburn window replacement was the hundred and seventy five thousand. And then I think Don was saying the insulation will happen afterwards. You'll insulate later. And and again, is that budgeted for? That's not part of the hundred and seventy five thousand?
So the way I understand this, it was the one price for insulation upgrades in the attic and windows at one time. It was one project. And so to me, it would make sense to stay off of the insulation. And then once the heat's involved, installed in the attic and then put it in. Otherwise, you're going to be putting in and removing it.
Right.
Once they put it, if you do it, you do it after the duct works in, it's going to be better.
Right.
It's going to be in place.
So this hundred and seventy five thousand is just for window replacement?
And well, the way it's saying it's insulation upgrade too. I think that was a combination price that Mike, you got. Was that a combination?
Again, these are all prices that your predecessors attained for me. So
I would say
back to Craig, this is a this is an older number. So
Well, I would say this is a combination of both. It was probably windows because they're single pane.
Just holding off on the insulation part of it.
Correct.
Okay.
I hate to, I don't see any sense in putting it in there and then getting it back out.
How many windows are there that need? How many total windows are there?
I mean, there's a dozen, a dozen historical ones in the the room I'm sitting in, the main room here, plus smaller ones throughout the building. Quite a few. And they're all in rough shape. There's one that really can't be opened and another that it's it's dangerous to open. So they are in need of replacement.
Yeah.
If we do them, the the windows I would be looking at, there's a couple options and will require getting multiple prices. But what we'd like to do is keeping keeping a authenticity of the panes, et cetera. They'd have to be, they'd be more expensive because we're looking at at least double pane. The other option is to keep the authentic style windows and then put in a basically a storm window panel, which could not be opened. And obviously, that's more difficult to work with. But I think it'll be the fact that we'd have better windows in there, insulated windows or with storm windows will offset the heating costs when we do move to improve heating facilities and air conditioning. So that's what we're investigating. The additional expense could be significant for putting the double pane insulated glass in in small panes for the existing to match the existing windows. Historic significance.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else from the board of directors of the library? Okay.
Thank, just just a thank you. Yeah, thank you for working with us and making sure that we continue to provide as as many services to the community as we do. We've certainly been a lifeline for a lot of people during this COVID situation. So we appreciate you keeping us on track.
I had a great lecture coming up on in March about vaccines and viruses.
Oh, very perfect.
Library plug.
The the libraries are an essential part of the town. And I think one of the things that make a town a town. So and we're fortunate enough. Though sometimes they may be in competing, may feel like they're competing, but and Mudus and East Adam often have been it. In fact, that's why we have two libraries. So if I remember my history correctly. So it's, I think it's essential that we take very good care of these buildings and as was stated, that all the services that they offer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Hi.
Going to be moving now to the fire department.
You have a few minutes to the fire department?
Yep.
One of the one of the things that I thought might be helpful is we go through capital. And you can pick any one of them. One of the things that they have is how much will this project save? And I've been making notes as we go because we, some of them say, yes, there's a potential for savings. But I think it's critical that we maybe start to quantify when we put in new windows, what the savings could be or new boilers, what the savings can be. So we want to really start expanding on that part of it. And that's one of the critical components of Claire Gov. So a lot of that would fall to Don. But I think that in the long run could help with some projects when you look at the long term savings because you've taken that action.
That's a great point. And thank you for bringing it up. The it's a that obviously, when we're talking about it, we are always looking for the savings at the other end. So when we're looking at heating and those options, that's one of the things that is at the forefront. And I should have brought it up. Thank you again for reminding us.
It's a good opportunity.
Yep. I mean, there's many things that we will not have. Obviously, there will not be a savings. But I think in many cases, we're look, we'll be looking at significant savings here. So.
That would be nice.
Savings are always nice. Okay. Now we're waiting for the fire department people to come on.
Right, we've got eighteen minutes. Do we want to talk about tomorrow and Saturday while we have a segue?
Yes, perfect. Who wants to talk first? Lyndon, you want to talk about that?
Well, I've sent you everything for tomorrow's meeting. Hopefully, the weather will allow us to to meet. I did send the link to all the people that are scheduled for their budget meetings. I think the rest of us, like Cindy and I, are all going to be prepared and bring everything home, just in case we have to do all this from home. Saturday, Cindy and I are working on, we have a tentative schedule for Saturday. We thought we would do like twentieth here. We thought we would work on the agendas of the folks that don't per se need to be seen. We talked about Saturday, you have the Lakes Association that we are going to participate via Zoom first. And then you have Assessor, Tax Collector, Elections and Registars, Ag Commission, Board of Assessment Appeals, Conservation Building Department, Regional Animal Control. Most of those folks that I talked to were fine not presenting. However, they all made comment that, you know, should you decide you're going to adjust their budgets at all, they did want to have a say. So I just wanted to get that out there. That they want to know that. And we also thought we could discuss the Selectman's Capital Budget Review, which are the items put in by kind of general government. They they involve grounds. They involve this building, the Grange Hall, the Old Town Hall. We could talk about those capital items that are in the budget. So Cindy's putting all that together and you'll get another packet with a meeting link for that for Saturday. I've already posted that agenda. Should we be closed on Thursday and or Friday because of weather? So it's already in the works. That's all I got.
And then Monday.
Yeah, Monday, we could talk about what I don't, I was planning Public Works, but I don't believe that's going to happen. I believe we're going to have to postpone him and until he gets back, we won't be able to talk to him. Postpone him until either Saturday, the twenty seventh. Or, and this was not on your original budget schedule, but Monday morning, three March first. So the thoughts were if we had a meet on a Monday morning, we'd maybe give up this coming Monday morning so that we're not you know, pushing Teresa, you out of work two mornings.
Well, that makes sense. How's that sound, everybody?
I just didn't know what everybody's schedule looked like. And like I say, I can't give you a definite answer on that until we speak with Steve.
Well, I can comment that I'm sure he won't be ready on the twenty second. So
Oh, absolutely. But I don't know whether he would prefer to be coming in on Saturday and doing his budgets or give him the weekend to work on them again, you know, give him the week and the weekend, and then he'll be ready Monday morning. You know, I just until we talk to him, I don't know.
Okay.
But I don't have anybody coming in Monday morning, the twenty second, and we're supposed to get another snowstorm Monday. So your pleasure, what you guys all would like to do.
It seems more reasonable that that to give him more time.
And that's that's fine with me too, because I know that he's been gone and the storms have been, there's been a lot of storms. So I can make my schedule work.
So we have the options and we'll leave it up to him whether he does it on Sunday or the first.
On Saturday or Monday.
I mean, excuse me, Saturday or March first.
Okay, so I'll cancel everything. I won't put an agenda up for Monday and I'll cancel the YouTube schedule and we'll skip the twenty second.
Yep.
So after Saturday, our next budget meeting after that will be the twenty fourth at four o'clock. And for that particular timeframe, I have scheduled oh, I'm losing that. Good way of schedules to come. Four o'clock, I'm looking at EDC from four to four thirty. And then at four thirty, I'm looking at all the land use commissions. And then I'm trying to fit in the ambulance association somewhere in there. I haven't heard back from her yet. And then on the twenty fifth, Thursday at four o'clock, I'm looking at Board of Education capital, shared services. Potential, you know, revenue inter fund transfers depend on if Cindy, you're you're comfortable with that before Public Works or if that needs to wait until after Public Works.
Not I couldn't speak to yet as we work our way through.
Yep. So um, that's kind of what I'm looking at next week. And then, like I say, pending Steve, either Saturday for Public Works or Monday, the first for Public Works. But at some point, you guys are going to have to take some time to start deliberating on some of these budgets.
Right. Good.
So that's the schedule of people coming in.
So are we canceling the Monday?
Yes.
Yes, twenty seconds canceled.
Okay.
You know, and if Steve doesn't present on the twenty seventh, do you want to use the twenty seventh as because by then you'll have pretty much seen almost everybody else by the twenty seventh, with the exception of Public Works? Do you start working on the twenty seventh, everybody, you know, like I say, but PW?
That would be my recommendation because we're going to take quite a while to go through some of these things. So we'll work as long as we need to to try and come to a decision on some of this stuff. On the twenty seventh.
Great. Yep, that that would be my thought.
I will also have for you at that time, that lovely little mill rate chart that talks about you know, the current year budget plus taking the current year budget and then adding expenditures and building and revenues. I think you you know which one I'm talking about, how much it impacts the rate and the tax increase. So I'll have that for you that Saturday. Which gives you a good reference point.
Cindy, I I know we got a late increase in the on the grant list because of Connecticut Light and Power last year. Are we still? Have we heard anything from them? Or excuse me, I shouldn't say as a flashback, Eversource, rather. It jumped up the grant lists considerably last year.
Correct. We have a one percent increase this year.
That's it so far? Okay.
It'd be the years that we had a tenth of a percent.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Always dream, so.
And the governor's budget, we touched on that on Saturday. We were pretty much held hold.
Yeah.
Point. Which is good as well. Did you all have any other questions or things you wanted me working on?
Charlie?
No, not right now. Thank you, Cindy Robb.
Teresa, anything?
Um, I, the, the only question I just thought of, but it's not a more broad question. The money that we have earmarked for the HVAC system at the Rathburn is, and that, that has to absolutely be used for the HVAC system and could, it couldn't be used for the windows since that.
At, at this point, it would, you could put it to that or put it towards the, um, what was the other item? Don, help me out.
Installation. Yeah. Installation.
That, well, you had the windows and installation.
Installation and the HVAC.
Right. So the, the boiler money could go towards HVAC perhaps that you already have in place. Or you could, you could make that recommendation to put it towards the windows. That's part of what your deliberations as you move forward to see. And, and the other piece in here, because we've been slow to get all the budgets, is to convene the Capital Projects Committee to take a look at stuff, Capital Improvement Committee. So they need to, to weigh in. So that's something now that we have everything but public works up to date. We might want to do some remote review of the capital with them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, unfortunately, because of a number of reasons, the change over to ClearGov and also COVID, uh, you know, it's delayed the reactivation, shall we say, of the, uh, capital improvement program. So, but, and I'm not even sure how effective that or how well that's going to work as part of the, uh, it's actually going to be, I think, more work in some ways for Cindy. But, uh, if we have to do it, uh, virtually. Because, you know, there's lots of changes that were posted and we could look at as we went along when we did it last year. So.
O'Brien's here. Hi, Brian.
Hey, guys. How are you?
Hi, Chief.
How are you?
Good.
One thing on the windows, uh, Teresa, just bear with us, Chief, while we're track, we're still talking about libraries, okay? Uh, is that, uh, we are looking at the total cost for the windows, but we weren't necessarily planning on replacing all the windows in one year. So, uh, so we addressed those windows that were worse, uh, and then planned for the future. We'd also have, after the first year, we'd have a much better idea what was, what, how much it would entail and, uh, the whole process. So, we're looking to improve the efficiency and also remove any windows that were dangerous. Because we do have windows there that need significant repairs and, and rotted sashes and things like that. So.
Right. And just the consequences for not have, for having really drafty windows and a poor HVAC system are really kind of scaring me with cold weather. So especially in an old building.
Right. So, uh, you know, that, I mean, we looked at the total price there, but, uh, it could be a staged process over two or three years. But, uh, the concern is that, I mean, last year we were relatively certain that the, the heating system at the East Adam Free Public Library would make it through the year. And, uh, we were proven wrong. But those things happen. So that's why we had to move on quite rapidly on that to change that. You have any additional thoughts on that, Don?
And so just a little, a quick thing on the, um, the boiler, like at the, the free library, is that we were probably looking at a three to four month wait before it even showed up. So that's another little hiccup for that, too. So if we happen, the boiler happens to go bad this winter, we're probably going to be out of commission until we can figure something out. So the, if nothing else, I mean, I would recommend starting with the boiler. And then working our way up, you know, it's, we can live, you know, you can work with heat and you can live without air conditioning to a certain point, but I would start there, you know, if nothing else.
Would you, would you start there before the windows?
Um, I would, because we could always, if a window, I mean, we can always put plastic over a window.
Right.
You know, I, you know, if a furnace goes down, we're, we're sending them home for two or three months until a unit gets in there. Um, they would have to drain the system, drain the water down, drain everything out. And so I would start, we'll start with the boiler. You know, at least we know we can get us through that and then work our way up. And put some money into the windows and the HVAC, because the last thing we want to do is have it go bad in the wintertime and not have a plan to fall back on.
And Teresa, some of this stuff would be concurrent. I've, not as hard for plan all along is that, you know, we could be putting in the windows or having new windows made at the same time we're looking at doing the furnaces. But I'm glad Don brought it up because, uh, these size furnaces, they're, they're not real common. They're, uh, right now steam. It's not everybody that has those, so to speak, on the shelf. So there was a, uh, and I had forgotten it, that it was a three, up to three months. And it could have been four months because of that. So.
Yeah, I think it all just depends when it goes bad and if there's someone else that needs one. Who gets it first. But if nothing else, I mean, that's where I'd probably start to bottom and work our way up. But ideally do it all at the same time, ideally.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Chief, how many more folk are going to be coming on, you know?
I think we're missing Jiffy.
Rob, we're on, you know, we're missing Jiffy. Um, I think Ray's actually, um, he's gonna stop over my place. Um, I see Sean is on, Eric's on, Rob, uh, Rob the Noise is on. And I think that was it, right, Eric? Yeah, okay.
All right. So as soon as Jiffy signs on, we'll get started.
I know she was, uh, she was working a little later than expected, Rob, so, um, hopefully we'll see her very shortly.
Well, we'll give her two minutes and then get going. So.
Copy that.
There she is.
Don, I have to say, that's an interesting ceiling over your head.
Yeah, it's actually in my, my bonus room at my house. It's got some interesting, uh, architecture, to say the least. I'm kind of getting a little, like bump out.
Oh, okay.
Like, like a dormer kind of thing. My desk is in a dormer.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
So now that we're all on here, and folks, uh, the, watching, uh, this presentation, this part of the presentation will be with the, uh, this part of the public safety budgets, what I'm trying to say, and the first item is the fire department. So, uh, who's going to lead the discussion here?
So, Rob, I'm going to kick it off with, um, with some of our accomplishments and then our goals going forward.
Okay, perfect.
Jiffy and I discussed, um, we would, uh, we'd all have a part with Jiffy, Eric and myself. So, uh, it's kind of be a segue into what they will put forth. So.
Okay.
Uh, obviously we faced some challenges, guys, uh, you know, with the COVID, the change in career staff leadership. Uh, but we also have a lot of good things, uh, that came down the pike between the 2020 and 2021, um, year. Uh, the department swore in six proba, probationary volunteer firefighters, uh, and two junior volunteer firefighters. Uh, the department had three firefighters complete, complete and pass firefighter one, three firefighters complete and pass firefighter two, and one firefighter to complete and pass the EMT. Um, in addition to our current staff, our career staff, the department hired an additional full-time firefighter, EMT, uh, and four part-time firefighter, EMTs, bringing the department's career firefighter and EMT staff to two full-timers and eight part-time firefighter, EMTs. Uh, Fire Police Steve Dorfman also obtained the first federal grant, uh, for personal protective equipment, which is outstanding, fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, this would include all gloves, gowns, face shields and sanitizers, uh, to the protective department during the pandemic. Um, the second great accomplishment came directly from, uh, both Steve and Career Lieutenant Eric Kolosinski, uh, when they obtained the second federal grant for one million dollars for the purchase of a new Quint fire app, apparatus to replace the department's nineteen seventy-seven, uh, Maxim ladder truck, uh, which is great. Um, you know, I think we were the second one in the nation to get something that big and we cannot speak highly enough about that. Uh, the career staff were relocated to Company Two, big accomplishment there, which is our EHFD headquarters, uh, in order to respond more efficiently and effectively with the cache of apparatus that Company One, uh, currently lacks. Uh, we did a purchase of new extrication tools to replace the outdated and limited function tools currently in service. And looking forward to twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two, um, our goals, uh, we're going to continue to increase our volunteer base, uh, by building a more effective recruitment campaign. We're going to continue to increase our department training to include, but not limit to aerial operator, uh, prior to the new Quince arrivals. That's, that would be a, a direct training that would be, um, seeked out for the department to get familiar with how this new Quint, um, is going to get functioned, how it's going to function and get our, all of our volunteer and career staff on board, uh, on how to operate such a, a large truck. Uh, we're going to continue to build an aggressive financial capital plan for the department's, uh, needs on future purchases of apparatus, gear, equipment, uh, and building updates with input from Board of Fire Commissioners, volunteer personnel and career staff. Uh, we're going to continue to expand upon the great working relationship between the volunteers and the career staff through consistent communication, combined drills in supportive leadership. And the last one, we're going to continue to research and apply for federal grants in order to reduce town spending on large ticket items, i.e. our fire apparatus, appliances, gear, et cetera. Does anybody have any questions on that piece? Just kind of setting the tone for what we've done thus far and where we plan on going.
Carleen, any thoughts or questions on it?
So I just want to congratulate you guys for a tremendous year in those grants. You, uh, you know, this has been a hard year for everybody with COVID going on and you guys just knocked it out of the park. Great, great job.
Thank you.
Teresa?
Just echoing what Carleen said of, thank you for, I remember last year during this process when we learned about the, the jaws of life not working, I was shell shocked. So I'm glad that is, but you, shell shocked for you and for residents, because it was, it just, yeah, just dangerous for you all and for our town. So thank you for all the work you've done.
Excellent.
All right. Um, I'll turn it over to, uh, or Jiffy or Eric or whoever wants to go first. I think it was Jiffy was gonna, uh, go through her spiel.
Um, I think I'll check in with, um, Cindy and Rob first. Which part of capital do we want to hit first?
Well, let's not do capital. Let's talk about, uh.
Operating on page twelve.
Yeah.
You're with a printout. If you start at page twelve with the charts and graphs and into thirteen with the actual spreadsheets.
Okay, good. Yes, uh, okay. We started off obviously with the regular employees. And I know you're going to see obviously a huge jump in that one. Um, there are multiple reasons. Um, Eric would be able to explain that a little more clear than I can because he's got the breakdown where I don't. Um, Eric, you want to touch up on that? And the rest of it, we can cover quickly for sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, so essentially as, um, Rob and I don't know if Carleen and Teresa know, uh, but, um, starting January first, we, uh, did a trial run on having four guys on during the day, Monday through Friday. Uh, two of them were six AM to six PM and the other two, uh, were eight AM to four thirty PM. Uh, we saw a need for this over the past few months where there were multiple ambulance calls at the same time. Uh, or for that matter, uh, you know, a couple of times where we were transporting and that left one firefighter in town and a couple of house fires came in, building fires. Uh, one was extensive. The other one was a, a fairly minor fire on Main Street. So looking at that as with one firefighter on duty, granted, we do have the volunteers coming in to, to help us. Um, uh, but at, at the same time, you know, until they get there or until our mutual aid companies get there, making an effective attack or if it's a rescue of some sort for a, a mountain rescue, cold water rescue, having one guy on scene is very difficult. It helps in a way that you're able to establish what you might possibly need for resources. But to, uh, help stabilize a situation kind of immediately, it's having an additional hands there, additional body there is certainly helpful. So our recommendation based off of that for this upcoming, uh, budget cycle is to continue with the, uh, four guys on Monday through Friday. Um, I came up with two proposals. I sent one to, um, to Jiffy earlier today, Chief. I'm sorry I did not get that to you. I will send that to you when I'm done with this. I do apologize. Um, I also sent it to Cindy as well. Uh, so the first proposal that we came up with is four firefighters on Monday through Friday for twelve hours, um, a clip. Um, that in itself would include, uh, two full-timers and supplemented by the rest of the part-time per diems. Uh, and then the second proposal is also four guys on, uh, two guys on from six AM to six PM and then two guys on eight to four thirty are kind of what we're do, currently doing right now. Again, that schedule is working out, uh, but at the same time, we would like to increase our coverage again because, uh, you know, the, um, response from, uh, an organization isn't quite up to par yet, which they're, they're working on. So, that's pretty much covers that in a nutshell as far as our proposal for that. What I came up with for, um, the two guy, or the four guys on twelve hours shifts, it'd be regular two hundred and forty hours per week. Uh, and then the other schedule is two hundred and five hours per week.
I would, it would be helpful for you and I to review this to make sure, because it's, that I understand how it's all tied out, because I got it late today and I didn't have time getting prepared and needing to, to really review it, because then I want to make sure the numbers match to what you're requesting, because they don't.
Right. So, so what was, what I'm looking at on page eleven, Cindy? Um, that was, that was something that caught my eye, uh, first thing when I got it today, uh, where it says proposed staffing firefighter, uh, EMT full-time at, uh, four of them, forty-two hours per week. And then the lieutenants and captains, that was, um, I'm not exactly sure where that came from. Um, but that was nowhere even close to what we were asking for.
I, I backed into the number based on our conversations to get to the totally requested. That's how I got there. So you and I can talk about it and review it.
Okay.
Because I just evaluated based on our discussions, the total number and looked at how the hours be allocated to achieve that number. But we can, you can look at it and, and, um, hammer it out and make it a little clearer, uh, more clear for the board to select.
Okay, cool. And then the, the only other thing that I did with the, uh, Cindy, with what I sent you to is with overtime in there as well. Uh, the overtime that's reflected in that, uh, is just based off of the firefighters overtime. The captains and lieutenants realistically should probably never get any overtime. I'm not saying it won't happen, but the possibility of it should be relatively low. So that overtime total in there is just a reflection of the firefighters themselves getting the overtime. So that overtime total in there is just a reflection of the firefighters themselves getting the overtime.
And that includes, you know, storm coverage, and unfortunately, many calls have come in late in the afternoon, i.e. anywhere between five and six o'clock, and that causes a lot of overtime, which falls to the the full timers. So that's where a lot of that budget goes to. And I guess holiday pay comes out of that budget as well.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So staffing, we increase that cost. Any questions right now? Obviously, we're open for debate.
Oh, so I think the real question comes up in the post-staffing, and once Cindy and Eric work together on that, and whoever else involved, that will be clarified, because there's a slight, there are some questions here, obviously, that will come from that. I have a question on the performance measures also on page eleven. So the calls for service here are just fire, fire calls, fire rescue calls?
Yes.
I'm sorry, correct. Those are just the fire department-related calls that they receive. That does not reflect the career staff calls that we do in response for the ambulance at all. If we added those calls into those numbers, I would say that we're, those numbers would probably chief or deputy chief, Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're probably looking at anywhere between seven and eight hundred calls a year for the fire department, for the volunteer and the career staff, including the EMS that we do for the ambulance.
So I think that would be helpful if those numbers were included for our consideration, just for information.
I think, Rob, if they, I think there was some difficulty in obtaining some of those figures.
Okay.
And that's why they weren't included in the annual report. If I'm wrong, be happy to add them, but I thought that there was a challenge in getting some of that data in accurately.
Right, so we, the ambulance association, obviously, they get the call volume from Valley Shore. We just started receiving it, I think, back in November, or at least I just started receiving it back in November, and for me to go back to January next year, it would take Valley Shore a little bit, our dispatch center, to get those numbers to us, and for me to, you know, thumb through them and calculate them out properly. But even at that, they might be a little, they might be a little skewed as well. The current system that we're hoping to switch to momentarily for for our calls, ESO suite, we'll actually be able to incorporate that into our call volume. So we'll actually be able to have a realistic number, hopefully, this time next year.
Okay, well, again, I understand there's difficulties getting it, but I just think it'd be really be, it would show more of the amount, or more, more details on what is actually being covered. So, I mean, not that two hundred and twenty-seven is a small number, or two ninety-seven going back several years, but when you would add in the EMS calls, I think it'd be significant, that's all.
Correct.
Very true.
Okay, so that's the employee part of it. And then you want to, I don't know who's going to handle the rest of the, thank you, Eric, on that, and the rest of the purchased professional services, etc. Rest on page thirteen.
Well, I can get going a little bit on that. The physicals, those are just going ever so slightly upwards every year. A good part of that is because we're getting more members that have to go up and get their physicals. So I really only increased that by a hundred dollars. It should equal what we expect. In-service training, that you did, we'll see a big jump in. There is one that we have to clarify still from this year, and that's a little over five thousand dollars from the Training Academy, where a bunch of our folks were supposed to take firefighter one. It's still unclear who actually went there and had it paid for. Kyle's been working diligently trying to get an answer from there with nothing coming back from Eastern whatsoever. So there's like five thousand dollars sitting there, give or take, waiting to be used for training. If they end up keeping that, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian or Eric, if they keep that, we can use that, but they just won't reimburse us for it. We just have to utilize it, I believe. Is that true, Cindy? You understand that one?
I know there's an encumbrance. I'm looking to see what was paid.
Thank you.
There was a purchase order.
What with COVID and all this past year, I hate using that as an excuse, but it's the reality where we all are. Many of our folks were unable to get to any training classes because of the limitations. I do foresee a lot of them stepping up to the plate and trying to catch up themselves, especially getting some firefighter one classes belts, and those are about fourteen hundred apiece. As well, the, and I misquoted unfortunately, the firefighter two class, which runs next, is about seven hundred dollars, give or take. So with all our new firefighters coming in, and the ones that we've had that have been on hold, that's going to add up quite a bit. We also have career staff that are entitled to some of their full timers for in-service training as well. So that's why you saw that big jump there. I just wanted to explain where that thought came from.
Okay.
Okay.
Clarify, you have a purchase order out for fifty-seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifty-seven.
Hundred and fifty dollars. I can give you the detail of who was trained, but if anybody was trained should have come off that purchase order, we need to know, because you've expended, this year to date, you've expended fifty-seven ninety-five, and you have a purchase order outstanding for fifty-seven fifty. So I will email you the detail of where that went.
Okay, that would be fantastic. Thank you. I'll give us a different way to look at things if needed.
Well, and if any of it would have fallen under that training, or if that training's not going to occur, and we can, and we can delete that purchase order, that will restore you fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Good.
The purchase order was with Eastern Connecticut?
Yes.
We've only paid them nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep, didn't think too many were able to get there, but I honestly don't know, because that doesn't even equal a firefighter one class. But we, that out.
We could look at that invoice and figure out what happened, but I'll send it to you now.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions on training? Repairs, maintenance, our fleet is aging to say the least, but we all know that under Capitol, you're going to see a lot of changes. I guess you can say, we have quite the plan for the next ten years, let's put it that way. Certainly, some of it's going to have to be reworked. We'll touch on that once we have to get there. But the costs are obviously going up. We do have, Lenny has been taking over doing our maintenance for the trucks, getting them scheduled and such. Not anything that goes wrong, he's, him and Eric are instantly on it, and get things repaired as soon as possible. We only increased that by another five thousand dollars this year at this point. A lot of work got caught up on, if you will, with the change in our structure. Some things were left undone, and now they're being done, and that should reduce some of our extra costs that are happening. Any questions on that? Do you need more explanation? Because either Eric or Lenny would have to answer on that.
Well, I'm just wondering, what does that include, the repairs and maintenance? You know, what are we looking at? Are we looking at equipment, buildings, or both?
At this one, this one would be for equipment, the apparatus and such not that goes along with all that. Building and maintenance? That's, Rob, did, Lenny, did you have something to say?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Building, building maintenance, that's another whole can of worms that has really fallen apart this year. Thank goodness to Newt, he helped us get through all of it. Unfortunately, there seems to be some things that could be lingering out there and just come up the back door. That's why we wanted to have at least another five thousand dollars thrown on top. Our majors was doors, generators, and multiple issues with the plumbing down at Company One, with possible more issues popping up in the next year, or could be ten, fifteen years before the issue pops up, but we know there is a problem. Newt, you got anything to add to that part?
Sure, so I don't think I got them in pointed, but for both buildings, there is rotten doors, walk-in doors, there's rotten trim. There is, like Jiffy said, there's been some plumbing issues. Some of it's been fixed. We're not sure if it's going to work, and it's going to stay in place for a number of years, but there is a potential, or we may have to go a little bit more into that, which could be costly. For example, like Company One, the back door, I, meeting room, is the bottom of the door is rotten, and the door frame is rotten, and the floor has started to deteriorate, so we have to get a new door and frame put in there. The openings around the overhead doors also need to be scraped, and the rot needs to be fixed, and it needs to be repainted. Company Two has a little more extensive work that needs to be done. Again, there was the trim around the overhead doors is rotten. That needs to be actually taken off, rebuilt, and put back on. We also have rot around the outside of the building, which that would be Capitol going forward. That's a little bit more than maintenance. And we have floors that need to be repaired, that were done, that are deteriorating already, that we need to work on, and some minor other stuff, some electrical and stuff for dryer, washer and dryer, stuff like that. But it's, there is outside stuff, the both buildings we want to get sealed too, the brick sealed, same as we're going to do, talk about the library also.
So Jiffy, can I just chime in a minute?
Sure.
The couple of issues that we do have, the plumbing at Company One, and then the floors at Company Two, that have been identified as problems. Newt, did you happen to reach out, or do you need me to reach out to the contractors that did the plumbing at Company One, and God knows what else they did there? And the floors at Company Two, because we still haven't closed out the building committee, as far as I know, correct?
That I can't answer, but I'm pretty sure that the plumbing is probably on us.
Why would we think that? They ripped that whole, I mean, I know, I know what you're saying, but would that not have been identified when they ripped everything out the first time at Company One?
The outside, no.
No?
The outside, no.
Okay.
From the back wall of the bathroom to the septic tank was never touched.
Okay.
So that's still original cast iron.
Yeah.
So, so go a little bit more. So we were able to dig up from the building to the septic tank. They replaced the cast iron that was there, because it was deteriorating.
Okay.
Couldn't seal the inside of the cast iron under the basement floor, because somewhere in that cast iron, there's groundwater, there's a hole in the cast iron, groundwater coming through, leaking down. But so that pipe is always wet, so we couldn't spray a sealing on that. So what they did was, is they cleaned all the scaling off, and made it look like a brand-new pipe on the inside. So worst-case scenario is that the oil tank would have to be removed, walls would have to come down, and the floor would have to be chopped up to have the cast iron taken out, because that cast iron goes under the floor, through the electrical closet, into the bathroom. So that would be worst case. We're going to knock on wood that the cleaning, the cleaning of the scaling worked, and that we're going to try to get through this. Worst-case scenario, it could be expensive. So from that wall to the bathroom to the septic tank, that wasn't part of the work that they did. That was the original cast iron.
All right, copy that. So the floors, though, definitely at Company Two, we could probably investigate, because that's just, that's a no-brainer.
Correct, and that's the glue, and matter of fact, we had the same problem with elementary school, and they came back and fixed it.
Okay, so maybe we find out, we find out the vendor, and they come back. I mean, they should stand behind their work on that, right? I mean, it's not that many years old.
It's not. It's not. There's a couple of different avenues to go on that, so I think once, once they, once it gets addressed, I think it should be in here, in case they don't address it. I think it should be in the budget.
Okay.
In case, because how long ago was that done? Two years ago, three years ago?
Three years ago, I think.
Three years ago. So I think it should be in there.
Yeah.
Because Connecticut is notorious for a one-year warranty. So that's by statute. So, you know, if we can't argue it out to get it done, you should have a, try to have a funding source to get it done.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other questions on building maintenance? Okay, the next item is grounds maintenance. That two thousand dollars has not been used in the past several years, because Public Works now takes care of the grounds. I am requesting that we change the title of that to medical. We as the fire department are now buying some medical equipment, all the fire trucks, the little trucks, the big trucks, they all have a BGM, a blood glucose monitor in their medic packs. Those have to be kept up. They get tested every week. Steve does that. I've been helping him with that. But we've also been buying gloves, and right now, I don't have a line item to put that into, so it's been being shared, to be perfectly honest, between building maintenance and everything else. But it needs a place of its own, and I have opted to twenty-five hundred versus two thousand. So that's going down.
To clarify, Jiffy, then there should be other supplies and move to supplies.
Other supplies and move to supplies, okay.
Or just add it to supplies.
Can we add that two thousand or twenty-five hundred to supplies?
Right, we can do that. So we'll make that adjustment.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I just don't see that going down, despite all these wonderful vaccines and stuff. If it can happen once, it can happen again. Any other, any questions on that for me?
That supplies then to jump up to five thousand.
And we would eliminate grounds maintenance.
Right.
Is that, does that work for Don, though? I want to make sure he's not planning on that, for thinking that money was for something else.
I, no, I did not. No, it works for me.
Okay, thank you. All right, I like it. Cell phone service, I don't believe that's going to change. We jumped down to supplies. That's kind of a catch-all one, I'm guessing, and it seems to be high this year. I'm not a hundred percent sure why. It might be because of some of the medicals I put in there. But I have no answer other than the fact that we've got to keep it up another thousand dollars, just to keep up with it. I mean, between actual supplies for stationary and pens, et cetera, et cetera, that obviously adds up, but.
So you don't think we can reduce this to twenty-five hundred, huh?
Under supplies?
Kidding!
Oh, no, we can't, Rob. We really, really can't. Don't go there. Actually, no, just kidding, we won't have more. I never touch electric, bottle, gas, gasoline, heat and fuel. We do go jump down to another big one, which is uniforms.
Oh, can you go back? No, you, I had, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay, not a problem. I'm having my coffee and I'm getting my mojo back here. We're into uniforms. Needless to say, both volunteer and career need uniforms. We've had such an influx of career that they are way behind slowly catching up, but unfortunately, the budget line has been surpassed, if not close to being surpassed, this year. I'm hoping, over the next year or so, we can increase this budget and get them all dressed and happy here, and they all look alike, and they present well. They try very hard so far, but we need to bring them up a little bit. Obviously, the volunteers need their fair share of parts of uniforms, but I'm thinking unfortunately, the cash is going to come towards the career for a minute anyway, a minute, for at least this budget year. We're not writing you off, Cap, honest, or Chief, really, we're not. But, you know, unfortunately, they're out there all the time, so it's, it's just the way it's gotta be right now. Does anybody need a breakdown on that, or how much do uniforms cost or anything? Because I know Lenny or Eric could have that.
I think that'd be helpful if you could get that information to us.
Do either of you have that available now, or do you want us to just email it to you, Rob?
Just email it, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll send it out to the I mean, uh, is this for like duty gear or just dress gear or or what exactly? That would be helpful too.
Hey, Rob, it was, it was all the gear that we had discussed on previous, uh, meetings. It was the five-eleven shirts, it was the five-eleven pants, the T-shirts, I think they even put boots in here. Um, but they've never, you know, they've never had the pants, um, and they they obviously need, uh, pants, shirts, et cetera, so. But yeah, we could, we definitely could get a breakdown. Lenny has a great, uh, breakdown on that, um, which we could provide you guys.
With the notes section there and the public able to see it, that would be very helpful.
No problem.
Thank you.
So, one of the things that we had, uh, and I'm not sure where the conversation came or went or whatever was, uh, is there a a cleaning service that would work for this? Is that available through anything? Any cleaning services for firefighter, uh, uniform?
Well, this isn't so much for cleaning right now. This is for just actually getting them the uniforms.
Well, I I I know, but I mean, you might be able to do two in the same. Eric, you were gonna say something?
So, in in my experience, as far as a cleaning service goes for the fire service, um, it's probably not gonna work.
Okay.
I I think what you're looking at is, because you know, for like myself, for stationware, I usually typically have five pairs of pants, T-shirts and a button up a- at work and whatnot. Um, usually when you go with the cleaning service, that's, i- if you're talking about having a cleaning service that cleans our uniform, but also supplies our uniform, uh, I think you're 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 talking, uh, a contract and you're pretty much looking at two full sets of uniforms, uh, for everything. So ev- so every time I come into work and the uniform service comes in and picks up my uniforms at every other week or however it's scheduled, they're picking up five pairs of pants, five shirts, all that stuff, taking it out and cleaning it, but also dropping off five pairs of pants, five shirts and so on and so forth. So I honestly think that the the upfront cost of getting the career staff, the, uh, station uniforms, and then once that's squared away, you can continue with the uniform allowance. Um, and that uniform allowance is, uh, the way it was always described to me is a maintenance allowance for going forward. The, uh, full timers, I believe, get six hundred dollars every single year. Uh, and then every three years, I think they get a, an additional three hundred dollars for boots. Uh, currently, and Jiffy, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the part-time per diems shared, so the eight of us actually share three hundred dollars for
That's my understanding.
Our uniform allowance.
Unless I'm misreading it, yes.
Right, uh, three hundred dollars to share across eight people, uh, is, doesn't get you much. So the request would be they can, you know, continue, uh, obviously with the, with the full timers, that's part of the CBA as far as that goes, but for the part timers per diems is to allot, uh, three hundred dollars per part-time per diem for uniform uh, maintenance, if you, if you will, uh, per year, uh, for for that.
All right, so that's good information, and I think that's what would be helpful when we're looking at this.
Can I just ask a quick clarification? Because in looking at the budget, uniforms for career are three thousand for everybody. And then, in this year's budget, and forty-six fifty for volunteers. So that equates to how much per person? For the career?
What was, I'm sorry, what was the career?
The career is three thousand for uniforms and forty-six fifty for volunteer. So that's why it's seventy-six fifty this year, bold the two of them up. Just in it, do we need to break them out between career and volunteer, or can it be in one budget line?
Um, no, I I, Eric, I'm sorry, I think it should be broken up.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'll do bad quality assurance on that and see.
Jiffy, Jiffy, sorry, especially now that these guys, these uniforms, I think it's important. You know, once we get these guys, um, what they need, everybody, then I think, you know, in a later budget, we can move it into one.
Yeah.
They they don't, they have barely, they have the bare necessities, most of them, which, would you agree, Eric?
I would agree. I would agree. You know, like I, like I said to to the chief, I don't know, a week or so ago, uh, you know, I've been here for eight years and I hate to say it, um, I don't, the town of East Haddon has never bought me a pair of pants. All of my work pants have been purchased through the city of Meriden. And that's what I wear here.
Cindy, on the numbers, I have, um, under career uniforms, I have up to ten thousand this year and for volunteer, five thousand.
Okay, because I can see with our new, um, hub-based software, it didn't break it out by the, the, it didn't take the account down one one more level, so I'm gonna see make sure they can do that. So as anyone's looking at the budget, it's very clear as to what the allocation is.
Okay, excellent. All right, good.
So, Jimmy, before we move off of page thirteen,
Sure.
I'd like to have any questions or any que- uh, receive any questions from the other select women? So Theresa, you wanna go first?
Um, Jiffy, when you with, within medical, do you all carry Narcan on the as one of the things that you're carrying?
Yes, we do, and that we do get resupplied by the ambulance.
Okay.
Yep. That and the epinephrine we get. Most of our AED pads we get from there, but we do have a Zoll, I believe, that we pay for the pads. And they're, they're not cheap, they're over a hundred bucks a pair.
And how were, how were costs around kind of PPE? You mentioned gloves, but masks and um, other PPE for this year.
With the grant that we got, we are, I can say we are well supplied.
Okay.
Well supplied. Uh, Steve did a bang-up job of figuring out what we needed and where. In fact, he's got another PPE grant out, I believe, right? Yes.
Okay.
Theresa, I'm not sure she heard or understand, understood your question. Were you asking where or who or how Narcan is carried?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make sure that it was available for people who were responding, um, with ambulances. Just, and so.
Yeah.
So it's it's with, there's, it's in each ambulance. Is it on any, uh, trucks used for rescues?
No, nope. There're not any trucks, right, Eric?
We we, we have it on the trucks.
Yes.
Do we? My my mistake.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood. Okay. Anything else, Theresa?
Um, not right now. I think once things are flushed out a little bit more, I'll have better questions.
Early?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, thank you.
So, on to page fourteen.
Page fourteen, the fire ponds. This is a handful. Um, it's been a work in progress for a couple of years, actually. Last year, if I remember correctly, we purchased all the adapters and hoses and whatever we needed to fix the four primary ones that are not working at the moment. Um, unfortunately, with everything else that has popped up, those have not been fixed. They're at Company One, they're out on Newberry, they're on Banner and Grove Street, here where I am. Um, obviously, all those places need some water supply. Um, there's been a couple of Banner, the pipe that I believe is in the first pond is actually an irrigation pond and that goes dry, so that's not gonna work. Um, there is a pond down back and and please correct me if I'm wrong, guys, if I go aside here on down back, which can get, be gotten to, not easily, but it can be accessed and that should be okay as far as fire up their banner, but it has been mentioned to, if they do start to build up there again, to maybe have them put in a cistern. The Newberry one, I don't know what's wrong with Newberry, um, but, uh, after talking with Newt a couple of times and the other guys, he's thinking it's gonna be at least a thousand dollars to fix each one. Um, of course, some of that stuff is unknown. Up here at Grove Street, the current one they have does not work at all. They've tried, these guys have tried how many different trucks? Three different trucks to try and get this to work. It's gonna take a lot. The pipe is very long. Um, but they have researched the area up here and down by unit one, there is access to the back pond, which if RMD, who are the people who own this place, can keep the area clear, um, they feel it should be a good place to drop line. Am I correct, guys?
Okay, so, um, I'm not sure, Don, whether you want to look at this or how this wants to be addressed. I'm not sure where this falls into fire marshals or where this is, or how this all comes together, but, uh, I think RMD's been pretty good to work with, so. Uh, but you might wanna reach out, maybe we can reach out to them about figuring out why this line is not working at all that goes to the current dry hydrant.
So with that one, that was, that installation was part of his approval of the subdivision for up there. So if if it was never tested after they put it in, I would, I mean, I could touch base with Jimmy, but they should be on the hook for it because that's part of their agreement. Otherwise, um, that, yeah, that was part of the fire department's approval to sign off on the subdivision. So.
Please, Jim, on that one.
Yeah. So the Company One hydrant was, um, we have someone to do that. It was a thousand dollars to fix that one. Um, Newberry Road, we have someone do that. Uh, there was enough money for those two to do, so I think, uh, those two will get done soon as, uh, unfortunately, I think they were, the ads were blown up. So I think they just have to get in there and put the bottoms on them and re-support them, put the strainers on.
Okay.
Hey, banners, I, the banners, that pond, I mean, that hydrant's been there for forty years and it's never had a bit of water in there and I, you know, so I don't and they do, they take all that water and they put it to a different pond to irrigate, so that pond is never really that reliable. I mean, the best one is in the back uh, for that, for that area up there.
Okay, thank you.
So the, so the question is, is your budget amount accurate, but also are there other fire ponds that, and I know, I think I need, I do know the answer here, that need or dry hydrants that need to be addressed. And is that enough money?
Gentlemen, I put in for seven thousand this year. Chief, Sean, Eric, is seven thousand gonna be enough, you think, to cover it all? Or am I too high?
I would, maybe we, uh, go for ten then.
That would be my recommendation, ten grand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Increase it?
Yeah, ten, ten thousand, Cindy.
I can add that to the notes for the board of selectmen to talk about. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, equipment and gear, we ready to move on to that one?
Yep.
Again, this is another budget that has increased. Um, it is for obviously getting gear for all the firefighters, volunteer and career. Um, there was a recent hurry done, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are quite limited on how many jackets and pants are actually gonna be what's the word? Not outdated, most of them are gonna outdate shortly, let's put that way. So we need to replenish the supply significantly. Um, yes, again, um, a lot for the, the cu- um, career firefighters we have um, doing that piecemeal, I think, at the moment. Um, but for the volunteers included, there is a grant, I believe it went out this week from Steve, um, to help with the gear situation. And he broke it down for me. He's requesting a grant of a hundred and fifteen thousand and that would include, I'll get to the next part, the town would owe approximately fifty-five hundred for that grant. Um, he is, he submitted it the week of February eighth, and we should hear about it by the end of May, early June. Um, what he's looking for is, um, sixty hoods, twenty-eight coats, eleven helmets, twenty-two pants, twenty-nine boots and sixty sets of gloves. He's also asked for an extruder, which is for cleaning the gear. It's a special machine just for gear as well as a dryer, and what's the name of the dryer, guys?
It's, I don't know the the brand name of it, but the dryer itself isn't, um, a dryer for for turnout gear, can be used for hose and also uh, the fire department's cold water rescue suits as well. So it's a, a three-in-one dryer, if you will.
And, um, we've talked to Newt, I've talked to him several times on electric and he said that was, we would be okay there and all this, the insulation is included, so the electrical's included in this grant. So hopefully we can get another grant going through and save a lot of money. Um, with all this, uh, one firefighter who's lost, um, a couple of pairs of boots and a pair of pants in the past couple of weeks due to a COVID person, positive person, um, uh, releasing fluids inappropriately. And and there's no way to salvage what he had on, just no way. Um, but there could have been other times where some of that soil, it could have been cleaned in one of these, uh, the extruder. So that's
Question, Jeff, so, equipment gear, are you saying you're relying on the grants because there is no increase in the budget?
You're right, there is no increase in the budget. We are trying to rely on the, on the grant.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to clarify.
That we do have, um, I talked to Chief just the other day, um, the, because it's broken up this year as far as career and and volunteers, and they've got quite a bit in there, I think, what'd I tell you, thirty-five hundred or thirty-five thousand, I think, in there still for gear for this year, where we're gonna try and appropriate more of that, um, forty-six thousand to the career guys. Until we can hear about the actual gear coming in. Cross your fingers we can get the grant.
Cindy, does that money go away at the end of the year?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I mean, the what's in there now?
Yes.
And he'll be buying stuff by then, huh, Chief? Yeah, no, that's how he does. We do it towards the end of the year, so we don't blow it ahead of time, certain, certain line items, we can do that on.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you understood that that, uh, money does go away.
Yeah, yeah. Does that sound reasonable to everybody so far?
Um, just a quick question. You said you would need fifty-five thousand as matching for the grant.
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred.
Five hundred, sorry.
Sounds a lot better, huh?
I literally, I thank you because I had that circled and underlined, so, yes, sorry.
And next time I should point everything, right?
Now I'll, now it'll have exclamation points, so, thank you for that working.
Not a problem. Colleen, any questions?
No, thank you, Jiffy, none right now.
Okay, great, thank you. Next line item is communications, that usually goes for our pages and radios. As you know, we've all got the Harris radios, um, from goodness, and they're really up and running and getting the mobiles installed now. So that that budget line, we wanna keep the same at this point. There are some new pages out there that might be needed as well as, um, planning to change the utility. We may have to put a radio into the, one of, the old utility. Right, we're moving it over to fireplace. Straighten my brain out, Eric.
So, uh, yeah, the, uh, utility fifteen So, uh, yeah, the utility fifteen, uh, the current, uh, F two fifty, uh, would be. Removed to take the fireplace. Vehicle, that vehicle itself will probably be getting, the utility will be getting a new radio. Uh, we're hoping this week, depending on the weather. Uh, the next two vehicles are to get their radios are the brush and the utility, so. Uh, as far as when that, you know, if that, that truck moves over and takes the place of the fireplace unit, uh, we're not gonna need to worry about. Getting a radio installed in that because they'll actually have it. It will just be the new utility, the replacement utility that would have to get a radio installed.
What happens to the fireplace S ten or whatever that is?
The, the S ten, uh.
Get it back.
Yeah, we, we can, we can give it to you guys back, but it's, uh, pretty much, uh, dead. Uh, it's.
Okay.
That, I guess, is the best way to put it.
Yeah, it doesn't get utilized other than holding equipment, so let's make it usable.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And dues and fees, that stayed the same. That's kind of hasn't changed much at all over the past couple of years.
So before we go into capital, then, uh, any, uh, things from the selectmen? Okay. So fortunately, there's only one item on the capital budget, so we're good.
Only one, huh?
All right. So who's gonna start with the capital for the fire department?
Which one do you want to go to? Do you want to go to the apparatus?
We just started page thirty-eight, Jiffy, and go in order?
Yes, please.
Give us a chance.
There, hang on. I like it when you give me numbers.
We try.
Eric, I'm gonna toss this one to you. This is the utility.
I just want to make everybody aware, we're, you've got about an hour for this, okay?
Yeah, uh, we have Craig coming in, don't forget.
Uh, you have less than an hour for this. Say forty minutes at the most.
Okay.
What number did you say? What page number?
In the capital request, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay, got it.
So I, I actually don't have that page in front of me, so I apologize.
Oh, really?
Did you get the email with the document?
I have, I have the email document. I just don't have it up in front of me.
But I, oh, did somebody take the hard copy?
No, it's downstairs.
Oh, it's downstairs, all right.
Um, but.
Anyway, it's regarding the, the utility fifteen. And it's fifteen years old at this point. It is in good condition. Um, but what we're, as you've all requested and we're trying to work on. Is reduce the fleet somewhat, but make it apps actually a little more usable. The S ten does not get used at all. It hasn't for a couple of years, like I said, other than storage. But what they are hoping to do is take this old utility because it's still in good condition, utilize that with a few. Um. Changes to the truck itself and use that for fire police and then it'll be actually utilized. All the time because even I can drive that one. And then they, they would purchase a new utility and get that up and running appropriately as well. Um, once he finds this.
So, uh, the idea, like Jiffy said, the idea behind that is to take the current utility and move it over to the fireplace. The replacement vehicle would be a, uh, F two fifty. Uh, the chief and I talked about this the other day. Uh, we're talking, going back and forth between the gas and the diesel. Um, I guess that's, we're, we're leaning. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, we're leaning more towards the diesel with that. Uh, and, um, it would end up having a utility body on it, uh, so some compartments and it would have a, a, a bed. A pickup style bed, uh, on the back of it as well for storage and stuff like that. You know, this truck would be used to pull our boat, the, uh, our UTV trailer and our other boats. Uh, we would also use it as, uh. For our day-to-day activities, Monday through Friday as a career staff, the volunteers would be utilizing it as well for, uh, transportation of. Gear, equipment, training and, uh, you know, things of that nature. Um, it's definitely something that we're gonna need, um, just to keep up with, uh. You know, have, having a fleet that's not aging.
What would be helpful on this is there's sections in ClearGov and I'm happy to sit with you guys because we have one disposition of current vehicle to be replaced. Reassign, I think it's very important to say, reassign it to the fireplace, not replace this vehicle, et cetera, et cetera, because then it. It, it gives, um, it shows it the greater value of it perhaps, right? Because you're, you're eliminating a vehicle, you're repurposing a vehicle. Just, just food for thought, if we can put that in here. Um, there's areas for us to add greater detail, so as the public and board of selectmen and finance are looking at it. They, they have a greater understanding of how you're trying to reduce your apparatus. And the, the total fleet and we can put that note in here as well.
Okay.
You're, you're, everyone followed up? Yeah, because I mean, I just had to make those notes on my sheet here, so. And. It'll be clear when we, because this will be also part of capital when we're discussing it with the, uh, various committees, so.
So we, if you guys want to schedule time and we can work on these and put the finishing touches on, I think it helps. Educate people as to what you're looking for and trying to do and, and they can read it themselves and, um, and it's documented.
Okay. Yep, we can do that. Not a problem.
Uh, Cindy, uh, with that, uh, where it says on page thirty-nine, it actually spells out, I actually did list in there that it would, that it could stay in our fleet. Uh, as a fireplace vehicle. Under additional mitigation regarding the condition of the vehicle, so maybe I just put it in the wrong spot, I don't know.
Or we put it twice, so it doesn't get missed.
All right, very good.
Just the more we can reinforce and we, so we can say we have an S ten that we can surplus bid, things of that nature. It's just, it just helps.
Yeah, so, uh, I was just gonna say the same thing. Redundancy here is, is helpful because, uh, it makes, people could have two places to pick up the information then.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, next. Thermal imaging cameras, page forty.
Yep. I think we love to reduce this, didn't we, um? Or it, I believe Eric found another place that can get what ticks we need at a lower price.
So we did look into that. Uh, currently we use MSA, uh, thermal imaging cameras. They are, you know, they're. They're a high-quality thermal imaging camera. It was brought to my attention that this company called FLIR makes a, um, thermal imaging camera for a. Significant. Amount less, uh, you're looking at for, uh, this FLIR camera, you're looking at about fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars. Versus something that's about eight or nine thousand dollars. So, uh, the. Cameras in itself, you know, yet we have fifteen thousand dollars for the, for the ticks. You know, we could, we, for fifteen thousand dollars, we can buy quite a few cameras, uh, and then, uh. You know, set it out and replace them every ten years. Um, the one thing that I would. Advise against probably in chief or anybody else is buying them all at the same time because then you're dealing with the same technology. For the next ten years unless the thing dies on you and then we have to replace it, so. I wouldn't necessarily replace them all at once, but I would say a couple every, every other year. And that way, uh, we're, we're staying with a, a newer technology as we replace them. You know, the, the cameras that we have now are, like I said, they're, they're great, but, um, the new MSA cameras that are out there are. Far superior than what we have and have the ability to perform more functions than what we currently have. So fire service is ever-changing technology, uh, and, uh, we definitely don't want to be caught behind the eight ball with technology.
So you're saying you'll need thirty-two to four thousand a year?
Um. If we, if we go with those cameras, I would say yes. If we're gonna stay with the MSAs, then we're gonna need the fifteen thousand. That's something that, um, you know, we've talked about. I don't know if the chief is on, on, on board with that. But we can easily, you know, we can accomplish the same thing with the cameras that we currently, that the, that we can buy for fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars, yes.
Eric, I'd like to see some research on that too, um, on who utilizes them.
Yep.
And see if it's gonna be the same type of quality as what we currently have.
Okay, you got it.
If you go with the, the less expensive and you're satisfied with it, then it would be an operating budget item and not capital, so we could make that shift if that's your determination.
Okay.
Does, it doesn't matter to me. I just want to put it in the right spot.
Yep. So you can get back to us on that.
Got it.
The next item here is you have, uh, well, anything from the, the selectwomen on those last two items? Okay, uh, ropes and rappel gear. Don't all jump at once.
Those, I believe, are still in, in good shape, to my knowledge, and, um. That we pretty much just put that in for a line item, but put it out until like, I think, twenty-six?
Correct, by two thousand and put it out to twenty-six.
Yeah. One day, excuse me, Eric, one thing I was gonna say that if you're gonna be looking at this one also in distributing those costs or rather than, than a. A large purchase all at once, it can be done over, it would not become a capital item. So. That's up to how you want to handle it, but, uh, you know, a lot of the stuff I question whether would all go. Need to be replaced all at once, but, uh. I will defer to your judgment on it.
Okay. You can research that. And get back to you.
Cause I know there was some concern, for example, about the, uh, for example, having it, uh. Some of that stuff in the, where the XUV trailer.
Yeah, exposed to the fumes and such.
Yep. So I know the, uh, current rope equipment that we have that's in this, uh, in the trailer, I believe was purchased in two thousand sixteen or seventeen. Um. The software, uh, per NFPA now, uh, is pretty much only good for ten years. The software would be ropes, harnesses. Um, plastic cords, anchor straps, pick-off straps, stuff like that. Um, the hardware itself, the, what we call the MPDs, um, which are we, which we use for lowering and hauling. Carabiners, stuff like that, that's a hard object. Is, to my understanding, um. Pretty much indefinite until it's actually ruined. So the, the ropes and stuff like that wouldn't necessarily have to be replaced until, uh, twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-seven. Uh, again, that also being said, if it gets ruined at a call, then we have to replace it, so. That could end up coming under operational costs out of equipment if need be.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on that from anybody? Okay, then this falls into the same general situation, I suspect, wet suits and cold water accessories. You also have this for twenty-six?
Yep. Same thing.
And, uh, you know, just in case other people are wondering, we have asked for all this stuff. As part of the capital budget for long-range planning and, uh, and for goes to capital committee, so capital improvement committee, so. I, I know we're looking out not at this necessarily this next fiscal year. All right, next item.
As I get higher, we gotta plan better.
Correct. So the next thing is you got a lot of money for fire hose. And you're looking at multiple years at fifteen thousand.
Yes, we do. Um, I believe we stand adequate right now, chief, right, with our hose budget?
There's a note here as well, the increase is also due to covering testing in the hoses, not just acquiring hoses.
Yes.
Any additional input? I mean, it's pretty much self-explanatory, I think.
Yeah, pretty much.
Ladies, Carleen, Teresa, okay?
Okay.
Air pack replacement. Same thing, similar, uh, multi-year, uh. Spending shares approximately fifty thousand a year.
Correct. No changes there, right, gentlemen?
Nope.
I hear nothing. I'm gonna go with no changes.
I think everybody is familiar with what the air packs are for and how they're used, okay?
Actually, um, Rob, one, one thing with that. So every year we have to do fit testing.
Yep.
Um, and. We can get our own fit testing machine, uh, through, uh, shipments. I did get a price quote for it and it's in. The area of, I think, ten to twelve thousand dollars off the top of my head. But it's something that we should, we should consider, and I don't know if that's something that we can take out of that line item, out of that, that, that capital. Uh, for that, um, it just, it's something that we have to do yearly and instead of paying shipments to come in. When they start doing it again, uh, it might be beneficial for us to, to consider doing. Right now shipments is not doing it because of COVID and, um, I just found out the Connecticut Fire Academy is doing them. We have to. Call and schedule because I think we're kind of. Slightly, uh, need, well, we just need to get that done and keep up with it.
What do we pay for testing?
My question exactly.
Um, I honestly don't know, uh, for that, that we would have to go back and research that.
No, well, and I don't remember myself.
So I think that's obviously an, an important figure to get to, uh, just justify the cost of the machine.
Yep.
Offset the cost of the machine, okay?
Yeah.
Do you think it would be something we could use out of this line item though for hose? Since it is for testing, et cetera, or?
Air pack.
Air packs, sorry.
Okay, cool.
We will get you.
Okay. Go ahead, Cindy.
With us on Zoom, I'm not putting the questions in, in real time for, um, what's brought up, so I will go back tomorrow at some point and put some of these questions in so you all get emails. And we'll have a paper trail to follow it up, okay?
Excellent. Thank you. Uh.
Just a little quick, I mean, Craig has signed on and from, uh, the balmy, uh. Somewhere in an island, I think.
Italy.
Italy, okay.
Italy, wow.
Just bear with us while we go through.
No problem, take your time.
Okay, thank you.
Next one's us, Noot, uh, repairing and placing the boiler and the furnace. Um, right now it's in good condition, um, looking at a possible cost of forty thousand dollars, but that's out another ten years. It's just holding a line line on.
Yeah, and that's also been, uh, reviewed and it's tied at, at the fifteen by the committee, so.
Okay. Absolutely.
For a long range. Good, next item is the duty vehicle.
Duty vehicle, yep. Uh, Eric, you wanna take that one?
Sure. Uh, so the duty vehicle would be replacing car fifteen, uh, which is, uh, was deemed, uh, out of service and unsafe. That vehicle had a rotten frame and a broken spring mount. Lenny, correct me if I'm long, wrong on that one, probably. If you can talk, I don't know.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I'm driving on my way to teacher class.
Um, yeah, the, uh, the car fifteen had a broken strut mount and a rotted frame. So it was taken out of service due to safety concerns.
Uh, so the, the necessity for that pretty much is straightforward. During the day, having a duty vehicle for the career staff or for even the volunteers, if they're around during the day to utilize it for training purposes at night and nights and weekends, the volunteers have duty officers on at night, and that vehicle would also be used for them as well at night, that they could take it and utilize it instead of their own personal vehicle. Uh, I think one of the important things with that, and I don't know how that will, could potentially work with insurance and whatnot, but the way I look at it is if Chief Al or Deputy Chief are on their duty night, and they're responding in their personal vehicles with their license sirens, and for some God forsaken reason, they get into a car accident, uh, you know, is the insurance company gonna cover it? So with that, having the duty vehicle for the duty officer or officers that night, I think, is imperative. That way it helps with insurance costs and, you know, the chief or the deputy or whoever's utilizing it isn't gonna get hung up with their insurance company. Uh, also with that, I think it's important, too, because that vehicle could also be used for training purposes as well for getting the volunteers to their training courses and leaving, you know, the utility or what other other vehicle they're utilizing in town for, for calls. But also, you know, the volunteers do a lot for this community, do a lot for our town, and to sit there and say, hey, you know, sorry, you guys gotta take your own vehicle to your fire one or fire two class or your instructor class or whatever it is. Use your gas, use your time, use your vehicle, use your veh, you know, your overall vehicle. Uh, it would be nice to have something for them to, to utilize instead of their own personal vehicle. So I, I think it's definitely important.
What kind of vehicle are you looking for? It's not clear.
Um, yes, sir.
No, I was just gonna jump in, but go ahead.
Alright. So we're tossing back and forth between, between myself, Jiffy, Rob and the chief. The, we're looking at possibly Ford F-150 crew cab with a cap on the back, a slide-out tool, a slide-out tool tray from the, from the pickup bed. And then if that's not gonna work, then we could look at a Ford Explorer SUV style, or maybe something a little bit bigger that we can still utilize the front and back seats. I think one of the problems going with an Explorer or something smaller would be that, you know, that backseat would pretty much be taken up for equipment and so on and so forth, where the back of that vehicle could possibly be used for command and stuff like that, a command vehicle as well, so I think going with that.
Eric, if you don't, if you don't mind, I'd like to step in there for a second, too.
Yeah, I got it.
One of the, one of the advantages to having a pickup truck as well is you don't store your gear and equipment inside of the vehicle. So God forbid you get into a motor vehicle accident or something, you're not gonna get hurt. But the, the other thing is, I mean, the chief talked about how six people went through fire one this year. That's almost, or that's over a thousand man-hours of traveling back and forth to class from six people. If four people are in, I mean, just your turnout gear, your helmets, your, um, your air packs and the equipment you bring to class, you've outgrown an Explorer by two people almost. So the, the pickup truck with the cap just makes a lot more sense for the needs of the entire department.
Okay.
Um, just for clarification, is this, is this different than the utility fifteen vehicle you were discussing replacing?
Yes.
Because the purposes sounded semi-similar.
So the, the idea with the utility is to keep that in town for a response vehicle for the trailer, the boat and, and whatnot, okay? The duty vehicle itself is more in line with classes and, you know, the duty officer at the nights and weekends and, and cla, and cla, you know, classes and stuff like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Hey, Eric, can I just jump in?
Yep.
As all our pagers are going off. Yeah, Theresa, I just wanted to clarify, too, with you. Um, the vehicle that I, I used and my officers used, and they used it to go back and forth to classes, was a hand-me-down cruiser that Mark was, was good enough to kind of help get the department, gifted the department, because it was gonna be crushed or in surplus. We were able to do some work on it. Um, it did cost the town a lot of money to maintain it because it was an older vehicle, police cars typically get beat on. But we had it from twenty sixteen to current, responded to five hundred and fifty calls, both fire and EMS. Um, and it was a great command vehicle. When I was going out, I would take it home on the weekends. Um, and, you know, I did a little research myself. I did send this to the commissioners. In a town like ours, fifty-six point six square miles, um, and our surrounding neighbors, there are eighteen departments that surround us that have some type of chief or duty officer vehicle. Um, and, and most of them are volunteer departments. They're not even career departments. You look at, you know, you always see the chief's vehicle or a duty officer vehicle going with the trucks. It just makes it more effective to get to a call, so you, you hear the bell go off, and, you know, I don't even have the vehicle anymore. What would typically happen is you would get, have a chase vehicle to get there first, and what it's gonna do is, whatever officer is in that vehicle, they're gonna be able to get to that call rather quickly, more fast than a fire truck would, and then slow everybody else down. So you get on scene and go, oh, wow, this is just a fire alarm. This isn't a fully involved structure fire. I'm slowing down my guys that are, you know, sometimes going Mach One to the call, uh, you know, risking, you know, any type of injury to the public or themselves, and you can slow it down. Um, so it, it is a great asset and, you know, definitely would hope you guys would consider it.
Thank you for that explanation.
Anything, Carleen?
Yes, so I wanted to just touch on a couple of things. One that Eric said about volunteers. And I, I, I have to agree with you, Eric, is that it's really difficult to get volunteers now, and we ask them for so much out of their own pockets to be paid for. So I think that this is one small little token that we can offer volunteers an incentive to want to participate in, you know, this department. And also, too, what Chief had to say is that I, I think it could possibly save time getting in emergency situations for that, that vehicle to make it to the scene first, do its evaluations, and then let anybody else know, okay, you can slow it, slow it down. Um, or we are involved in a, you know, in, in a full-fledged emergency here. So I think both of those are very vital to how important it is to have this duty vehicle.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna have to move along fairly quickly here. So, uh, next item up on page thirty-five-four is the hydraulic extrication equipment and airbags. I think that's been addressed.
It's been addressed. It's just on a line item for ten years out.
Okay.
Can I just quick ask? This, what we have here is to purchase, to pay for over four years, the one we're, we just got. Should we have it out on the horizon again, and we don't?
Yeah, so right now it's only out to two, two, twenty, twenty-four.
I honestly thought I put out for another ten years. My apologies.
So put it out for twenty, start on twenty thirty-one again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I lost that one. Okay, good.
Uh, heavy extruder and dryer closet, I think that's what Eric was talking about earlier.
Yeah, that's out for the, on the grant, and we're crossing our fingers for that.
So you have a reference for twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Assuming you don't get the grant.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
With, with that, um, my personal opinion is the sooner the better on that. Firefighters have a much higher risk of get, developing cancers than anybody else, any other service, strictly because of the chemicals and the, in the, um, the smoke that we're exposed to. The current washer that we're using is a residential washer that does not do what an extractor does. It says extruder, but it's actually an extractor.
Oh, okay.
A gear, a gear extractor. Yep.
Fine, we're gonna move it up to this year if you don't get the grant. Okay?
Thank you, Rob.
Alright.
Thank you, Rob.
I just wanted to save you talking all that.
Alright, thank you.
Cindy, you can change that, please, or, or somebody can change it, too.
I got it.
Alright, thank you. Next thing out is three AEDs and chest compression devices.
Yeah, this has gone down. We originally were asking for, I think, six AEDs and two chest compression devices, many times called the Lucas device. Uh, we reduced that, um, assessed everything, and again, we may get that. No, we did not get that grant. But we definitely need the AEDs and hopefully one compression device. We are planning to get one with the, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe we're correct, getting at least one AED with the Quint and, and a initial compression device, which is gonna save us money.
The, so from my end, you were a little muffled there, so clarify what's happening this year or already?
This year, um, they're gonna be adding one Lucas device and at least one AED to the Quint equipment when that comes in. They're requiring.
Okay.
That's gonna be a lifesaver.
Are you still looking for the capital cost of twenty-five thousand for this year for, for other AEDs and another chest compression device, another Lucas?
Yes, because the chest compression device is at least, what is it up to now? Seventeen grand, I think.
Okay, compression, compression device?
Yeah.
The, the Lucas device, uh, you're looking at, I think, twenty to twenty-one thousand dollars.
Up higher than I thought, okay.
Yep.
You hadn't hear that it's twenty thousand five hundred, the eighty, your fifteen hundred. When would you need to replace them again?
Uh, the AEDs are good, I think, per the manufacturers for ten years. And then the Lucas device, I honestly don't know what a, what the service life is on a, on a, on a Lucas device.
Because if we need to put it out in the horizon, we probably should.
Let's put it out ten years and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Good.
Company one generator. Looking out here, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, yep. Enough.
That's all about now, is it? Dan, what's the situation of the generator up there? Company one?
Uh, that will be up for replacement around twenty-eighth. That'll have twenty-plus years on it. Yeah, so that'll be the, the number we've been going with, just so there's no issues down the road of that being an emergency shelter.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that generator was actually replaced in two thousand eleven. It was replaced right after Irene, because we blew it up during Hurricane Irene.
Right, so that'll be about right, twenty-eight. Yep, good. Thank you, Craig. See, you're here for a reason. Uh, let's see.
Next thing we have is page sixty-two. That's a fire company one boiler and furnace.
That's just another line item on hold.
Yeah, for twenty twenty-eight, that was replaced in two thousand eight, so that'd be about the twenty-year lifecycle.
Okay. Excellent. Company one air compressor for SCBA refills. That they're out, looking out at thirty-one?
Yeah, tho, those, I understand, have a long life expectancy, but because it's a piece of equipment we have, I put it on there just again to have as a line item way out.
Okay. Any questions on any of these ladies? Just jump in, anybody? Okay. Uh, and then we're looking at something more current, which is company one to security access controls. Someone wanna talk to that?
Where did that come from?
Is that the, is that the, is that the cameras and monitors?
That was the access control panels for the badge IDs. If you don't want it.
Who snuck that one in?
That was on the list, and I put it in yesterday or day before.
See, you were looking after everyone, so.
Thank you.
And so I put that in there. I'll let you guys to talk about it, but it was, I know, to, uh, for more access, the same as here as the town hall. Along with that, too, is you need the servers in the firehouse, too. So that's kind of what brought up the cost, too.
Okay.
It was, it's in there. If you wanna go with the, keep with the keys, that's your call. If you wanna go with this, that's also your call, but that's the price that we got from Metra.
The idea, the idea being that if someone left the service and didn't get a key back, as currently the case, it would allow us to immediately remove their access. And Craig, I think, was saying that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Everyone's on board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Noot. I, I had missed that one.
And we need some item, uh, next item is page sixty-eight, fire company one and two overhead door openers. This looks like you got a bunch for this year, but I don't know if you're looking at a continual.
I wasn't, no, it wasn't for a continue. It was, they are one thousand six fifty each. They have been failing at a pretty steady pace there. Uh, we've done, we've replaced two full ones, and we've spent a lot of money on maintenance and putting money into them to continually go back in to fix them again, as parts are continuing to break on them. The eyes are another issue that has been happening, the infrared beams that go across. So we actually, on a couple doors, put pressure switches on the bottom of the doors, and it seemed like they are working out better than the beams are. So instead of piecemealing and trying to do one here or there and having to come down three or four times to fix the same opener, like to do a few of them at one clip and get them all on the same, same lifecycle.
So the proposal is replace five per year. Correct? That's what it says on the document here. Five this year, five next year?
Is it five? Yes.
Okay.
So we don't have it?
It wasn't on there.
So in order to make it capital, they all have to be done in one year?
Yeah, so that'd be, yeah, just a total, just, just a total of nine.
Okay, I'll correct that.
Okay.
That was the question, okay.
Thanks, Rob.
So the next asset. So the, so the next question is, and maybe, Don, I think you've been working on this, uh, the next item, that question. Fire company two replace deteriorating metal sheathing.
Yes, that's, uh, pretty much around the building. The bottom of the building is rotten, you know, some places two inches up, up to a foot up. The exterior sheathing and the, and the trim is in contact with the asphalt. And between the water and the salt over the years, it's created rot, and it's been coming up the, up the wall. I, nobody's really going out there and giving a price on it, solid, because I think once we open the wall up, the outside, you're gonna find rotten studs on the inside, you're gonna find bad insulation, and probably bad drywall on the inside also, inside the wall, too. So I think twenty-five grand is on there. It's probably gonna give us one end wall. We may be able to go a little bit more, but I think that's a good, good place to start. That's the worst. I'm a little, it, it would be a good starting spot to see what's actually going on inside. And it may not be that bad. We may be able to get more done, but it's definitely rotten on the outside. So I'm assuming that the, the metal studs on the inside are also rotten. So it may be a little bit deeper of a fix than just a skin. So it may be a little bit deeper of a fix than just a skin.
It could certainly snowball.
Hey, Don, there is a study that was done by ONG in two thousand fourteen, fifteen on that building. So when we hired them as a consultant to look at the entire um. Budgeting for the municipality, the schools, the firehouses, all of that, they did do a study, we'll have to look. We should have that somewhere, they did look at um the foundation and behind the panels and stuff there. At that point.
So that's, yeah, that'd be good, but I'm, my gut tells me that they're. Once they cut it open, you're probably gonna find a rot, so. It's um.
Good to know something was done, though, at least looked at.
Yeah, it was, uh. So that that was for that for that that funding. And I actually think that there was a higher number that was done a few years ago. With someone else, I just have to find that.
So, Don, this was for the south wall?
Yes, yeah. And we may be able to get farther. You know, I think that's a good starting point to get going and. Once it gets opened up, it it may not have gone that far. So we may be able to get the entire building done, if it hasn't gone that far.
Okay, so the next thing, thank you, Don. Anything else on that from the ladies? Okay, good, uh, fire company to renovate the kitchen, twenty-eight grand. I think that's self-explanatory, but uh, cuz we're gonna have to move along pretty rapidly here because we do have it. Seven o'clock meeting that. That's a.
Minute over. We would do that the same time, hopefully the same time the floors are getting done and just get it all over and done with at the same time.
And that's the same thing for the. Fire company two replacement floors, kitchen, day room, et cetera?
Yes, correct. Uh, this next one, engine one tanker two combo vehicle, that's way down the line to twenty thirty. Do you wanna hold off talking about that or what? Since.
But that's a consolidation of equipment, much like we did with the uh. Ladder truck. Pumper. Similar to that?
Yes, I believe so. But again, down the down the road a piece.
But the importance, though, of this is I need to make sure you're planning the savings in reserves sufficiently to achieve this. So. I will, I, as I plan the reserves, as the selectmen move forward, I will assume that this will stay.
Cindy?
Oh, sorry.
Cindy, quick question for you, this is a living, breathing document, correct? When we put things in, we we can go ahead and change them, is that correct?
There is the ability to change us, um, obviously, cuz there's priorities changed, but we're trying to get a little more consistent with the capital plan and not have it vary so greatly here this year. That is a goal.
Appreciate it.
Okay. See.
So only three or four years out, we have a engine four rescue combination apparatus. For nine hundred thousand.
Eric, that's your ball.
Yeah, so um. Engine four was slated to be replaced in twenty twenty-nine, I think it was originally. You know, looking at that and looking at the amount of money that we spent on it this past year. It's, you know, it's it's been a. I hate to say it's been a headache since I came in here, you know, even prior to my time and uh. New can attest to that and I'm sure the chief and Sean can attest that as well. So thinking about it, looking at it, uh, knowing the gremlins that we have with it right now. It just kind of makes sense to move it up by a couple of, by four, four years, I think it is. To twenty twenty-five, I think is what I had it in there for, I don't even see it up there.
Twenty-five, yes.
Okay, uh, so doing, uh, you know, replacing engine four and then also, um, again. Uh, trying to uh help reduce fleet uh and overall costs, operating costs. That go along with it, combining it with um they. Getting rid of the rescue, rescue one fifteen as well. And getting a rescue pumper squad, however you wanna label it. With that. You know, that's. Over overall, it just, it it uh, it's gonna help with the overall operating costs of the of the department.
Similar, I think, uh. There may be additional discussion amongst the chief and others regarding this consolidation of equipment, I I. I'm thinking, so.
Rob, I'm just gonna say I'm not a hundred percent on board on um some of these items.
That I already figured out.
Yeah, I know, I have no poker face and you all know that, so. Um, but yeah, I think it's definitely um up for discussion, especially with the um officers on this side, so.
Good.
And we can add a later date.
Alright. So the next item is a similar situation, brush combination apparatus. So before we spend a lot of time on this, if there's gonna be, or there's a lot of thought or concerns here, uh, I would recommend that uh. They be ironed out before you come back and come back to them with a with them to us. That make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
Now, I'm sorry to bring this one up, but it it kind of needs to be done and it's really new. Um, because of the Quint coming in. And the and engine four having major problems with this no-smoke system. Um, there has been finally a, um, not finally, didn't mean that one. There is a quote for placing the climate vent system um for company two. It is needed to reduce the carcinogens, the Quint cannot take the no-smoke system. It's just impossible. Um, if we're gonna do them, we're, we should really do them all and only do it up at company two. The other issue with the engine four is that the um no-smoke sits right in the middle underneath the truck and it gets hit every year and we have to fix it every year. It's, I think, in the process of being fixed now or soon to be, or if it wasn't just done.
So, Don, didn't you get some praise into this or you're working on it or something, or somebody was yet working on it?
And I've worked on it.
Eric got them.
Run, uh, Don today. That's how news is.
And that brings to mind, because I I know Don was working on it, you all can check to make sure you submitted all of your requests. If there's anything out there not submitted, I don't have it, so don't double-check your clear gov. So that I can update accordingly, cuz if you don't hit submit, the selectmen don't see it.
So those are open to go back into?
If you haven't submitted it yet.
Okay.
So we'll add that to give to the selectmen.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, that is all, I believe, of the fire equipment. The rest of it. Dealing with emergency management is. With emergency management, nine-one-one services. Is there anything that we're missing from the fire department? Now, again, as Cindy said, there's nothing that says you can't add something here, but uh. We just have to make sure it gets in very quickly.
Okay.
And and I I don't wanna waste time, but I really think it's essential that we perhaps chat with the fire department again.
Yes, I think.
We got hurried at the end. Just so we make sure everybody's clear and we've got everything.
Thank you.
Carley, Teresa, any comments before the fire department? Responds to supper?
No comments right now, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, Sean, Rob, or Letty. Chief, Eric.
You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Bye.
Bye.
You guys, bye.
Bye.
Okay. So. Lovely sunset I'm looking at, or is it sunrise down there in Italy?
Sunset. One of my last trips pre-COVID.
Ah, okay. So, uh. We're talking emergency management now and um I'm sure you have the documents in front of you. Uh, you wanna give us a brief overview?
Yeah.
Page numbers, because I have just gotten so screwed up.
Fifteen in the budget request, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so just for time's sake, cuz I think capital will be a bigger discussion. Um, on the operating budget, there's only one change to the operating budget and that is uh based on a um. Planned two-point-five percent increase to the Valley Shore budget. Uh, which is our nine-one-one service, so um that is what they are asking us to put in as a placeholder. We won't know the exact increase there until they do their funding formulas and see what their budget comes out in. Which doesn't typically happen until the end of April, beginning of May timeframe. So uh, we always ask them for a placeholder and at this point. Valley Shore is saying to use two-point-five percent, so. It will not go higher than that, but um it could drop a little bit if that reduces, so. So that is really the only change in the operating budget, I honestly, um, part of the discussion. Will be giving back this year, probably about twelve thousand dollars in in our operating budget because of the fact the radio system has been delayed. There was twelve thousand five hundred dollars in that budget for maintenance on the radio system to start at the end of uh. Or at the beginning of Q, well, our Q four, so um, you know, to cover May, uh, April, May and June. So that is not gonna be spent this year because the system will just end up being put in finally. Uh, commissioned probably in April of two thousand twenty-one versus twenty, which was our original proposal, but. COVID uh very quickly put an end to that, so it's been on hold. So that twelve thousand will not be spent this year and we'll come back to the town.
Hey. Teresa, Carleen?
No questions.
Okay. Well, that's. Pretty simple, sir.
Yeah, probably be easy.
Yeah.
Um, on the capital side. So um, as we talk the radio system and that's what really all of the capital that is in there is for, um.
Thanks, ladies.
Start, yeah, thanks. So the the radio committee, um, Matt, we reviewed a proposal for budget submittal. This is a short-term, there are two requests to look at here, there's a short-term request. Of three hundred thousand dollars, which is needed to complete our project. So when this project started in two thousand fifteen, we created a budget. Um, and asked for a budget of two-point-one million dollars, which was where we real uh had hoped to be able to bring the project in at. We are now, six years later, a lot has changed since we created that original budget, including us, um. Unfortunately, spending. Somewhere around seventy thousand dollars on engineering costs between the school, the middle school and the good speed. Uh, only to kind of have those pulled out from under us and our ability to use those sites, so that engineering uh dollars kind of. Went to waste, unfortunately, in the project. The other thing we've learned as we've built out the sites and started to use the system. Is that there is clearly a need for an additional site to cover the headline section of town. And the area of town down along Route eighty-two and one fifty-six. And we now have the opportunity to partner with Valley Shore and most likely. The State of Connecticut Department of Public Safety to go up on the Honey Hill Tower at a very reasonable cost. So that is the majority of the dollar request in that three hundred thousand. There's also two um. Other parts to that request. One is for new pagers, for all the fire and ambulance folks. So currently, uh, we are using low-band pagers and and they are obsolete, they're no longer supported within the fire departments. There are new pagers that have come out now, um. They are, I don't know if you can see them, they are um a seven, eight hundred UHF combination pager. They run about the same cost as the USF page, uh, as the current low-band pagers. But the issue we have is Valley, as Valley Shore starts to convert over to their simulcast system. Low-band paging is gonna become obsolete and the current pagers we have are no longer going to function. So there is a need to get new pagers for folks, as well as as they break, we can't even repair them. So in that budget, there's about sixty to seventy thousand dollars to purchase pagers. In in that three hundred thousand dollar number, there's. About sixty thousand dollars to purchase new pagers for the fire department and ambulance. As well as, um, there's a small number in there to look at putting some. Uh, repeater sites into the schools where we continue to have uh some coverage issues. And try and help boost the first responders' ability to talk within the schools on the fire and ambulance and town frequencies. So we've seen these deficiencies, we had hoped. Our tower site at Mount Pernasis would cover into some of those sites and it's just not doing it as well as we should and. And honestly, the the maps showed us it was very borderline and we had hoped for better than it is, but. The other thing that has kind of driven our project a little bit here is when we started this in two thousand fifteen, there was no ability to. Partner with the Department of Public Safety and get onto the statewide radio system. And that became available for, very fortunate for us, right before we were ready to purchase portable and mobile radios. In two thousand, end of two thousand eighteen, nineteen. That option became available, which is, I I know when I talked to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. Uh, last time in the joint meeting, we talked through this, but. That made a significant change to um our project and how we approached it. Um, it did add a little bit of funding uh i- in our budget or costs in our budget. But the uh outcome has been incredible as far as. The radio coverage in town and what we got out of that little bit of extra funding. That we spent on the system and on the radios and the additional cost of each radio. So uh, we've currently deployed mobiles, uh, portables to all of the fire and EMS staff. Uh, the mobiles are being installed as we speak right now, uh, within the fire department and ambulance. And uh, they'll go into the officer's cars after that, so we hope to have all of that done. Within the next thirty days, all of that should be fully deployed. And our sites should be fully up and up, we've been given a target date of. Uh, the end of May for all of our sites on our simulcast or town simulcast system. To be fully up and operational by the end of April. Uh, and part of the holdup there on top of COVID has been the partnership that we're doing with Valley Shore and the state and. IP addresses and a lot of things have just snowballed as we've tried to put stuff together. Um, with everybody being so tied up and and busy. Uh, with COVID and and how it's changed people's ability to function and meet together and a lot of things, so.
That includes Honey Hill, right?
Sorry, Rob.
Does that include Honey Hill?
It does, so that three hundred thousand includes Honey Hill, the pagers and the schools is what's in that three hundred thousand dollar number. And then there's uh some budget lines that were put in there for um. Long-term replacement of equipment as well as short-term replacement of equipment, so. We threw, starting in two thousand twenty-two, so not this current budget year, but the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. Uh, we put a line item of ten thousand dollars a year in for replacement of damaged mobiles and portables, so a firefighter's. At a fire, his portable gets damaged, it gets dropped, it gets run over by a car, lost, whatever it is. Basically, we've put a number in there of ten thousand dollars a year, which would cover about three radios a year. Again, if that's not spent, it it'll sit there and and won't be used and when as we come back to the. Board of Finance in the next year, we may say you don't need to fund that ten thousand dollars. Um, and then additionally, we've put in ten thousand dollars a year for. Covering repairs to the tower sites. Um, that are non-warranty covered in the short term and not covered under a maintenance agreement that we'll have in place, so. Um, when you think about the fact that we've put in. Close to a million dollars worth of infrastructure at the tower sites currently. You know, it it just takes one lightning strike or one, a couple of incidents where it's little parts that are taken out that aren't covered under a major insurance claim. That that money's in. that uh that money's in there to cover. So again, there's no intention of spending that money unless there is a, a need to spend it. But it's insurance for us to ensure we have a radio system that's maintained and stays up. And then uh as we look out into two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, there's dollars in there for replace, starting a replacement cycle on portables and mobiles. Um, you have to remember these portables that we are using today and are functioning on today are mini computers. So the lifestyle of cycle or uh timeframe of your current computer is about five years. The radios are very similar. They have software in them. They have firmware in them that has to be flashed. Um, again, there is nobody saying that five year and one day hits and Craig's portable is in perfect working condition, it's going in the garbage, right? That's not the intention, but I think we would be not uh, you know, doing ourselves any favor to have this in a long-term capital plan. Um, to be able to support the replacement of them uh if they are not functioning correctly.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, that's actually the goal of this whole system we put in place, to, to be anticipating these costs so we don't get blindsided at some point down the road. And as Craig says, if, if it doesn't, if we don't spend it, doesn't mean we actually have to use it anywhere, so. Uh, and those costs can either be carried along in the anticipation of a greater number of radios or pagers going down or uh or just not spent, so. Any questions from Teresa?
Um, no, none. Thank you.
And Carleen?
No, none right now. Thank you, Craig.
Well, great. Very comprehensive. Thank you. And I think that's what we're looking for and uh, you know, obviously, we can't guarantee what's gonna happen. We could have a mass a terrible lightning strike or storm that takes out two or three towers and we're gonna be looking at more money, but uh potentially looking at more money, but I think it, the idea is planning ahead so that we have these things in, in uh the money available so that we can address it in a timely manner. Cindy, any uh other guidance on this? Unfortunately, we're really tight on time here.
Right. I'm gonna work to get stuff updated, put the notes in because I think the fire department may do a bit of um adjusting and I want to make sure when you guys start to deliberate that you have their latest and greatest information and you're not. We, we've allocated all appropriately to give you that guidance, so we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Craig, any additional information or insight here?
No, not at all. Um, you know, I, I, I am so glad that we're seeing the radio project finally start to come to fruition and come to an end and um, you know, I know the guys are very happy with, and girls are very happy with uh how it's operating and their ability to talk and um communicate with each other. You listen to um just the snowstorm last week and um how they're able to Valley Shore is able now to pop up on our Public Works channel and talk to our Public Works guys and make sure they're going to an address to plow the driveway before the ambulance is headed there. Um, our Public Works guys get the same toning that our fire department and ambulance get as the calls are going out, have the ability to switch over and talk to each other across town. Um, it's, it's brought us into um the twenty-first century as far as technology on the radio side, which is well overdue, so.
Nice.
Yes, and I don't, I don't know if anyone else has been monitoring, but uh it is uh great to hear the, exactly what Craig was just mentioning, that they can tone it out and, and the fire department staff uh knows where it is and, and also they can dispatch uh Public Works and I know they've gone to a couple of the calls so that they get the driveways plowed or whatever to uh assist EMS or even the fire department, so. Yeah, all right, Craig, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yes, and we may be back here if any questions arise.
Yeah, no problem. Absolutely. We appreciate the time.
Thank you, Craig.
Have a good one. Bye-bye.
So uh we have about five minutes here before our next meeting starts, so uh without further ado, if there's any questions, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Uh. So do we need to go out and come back in on a different zoom?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
Okay. It's the problem.
Just a little, little bit of a pro, uh uh complication, shall we say? So thank you all and uh we went through a lot of stuff here. I'm sure there's some people want to take a longer look at it. There's a lot of pages of stuff here, but the interesting thing is we have a lot of pages of detail, so.
There were no questions from the audience, so.
Thank you. That was gonna be my last thing, so. All right, so uh we have a motion, a second, so all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Teresa Gobert, aye.
Carleen Quinn, aye.
Rob Smith, aye. Thank you.